Thank you so much, please do you see?
I think the speakers system is turned up for you. It is not coming through unless I am in the room.
It's probably because I'm speaking too quietly.
No, it's not coming through.
No, it's not coming through. Is that any better?
No.
Well, I'll try and show. I've got something in the past to sort this system around. I simply want to say that I met Marilyn on many occasions here. And at one point, we actually went to a conference. And Marilyn, where we learned how to chair a visiting business. If you don't speak now, I'm not going to say anything. It was a very, very joy to work with her. And I just want to say that. Does anyone else want to say anything? Richard?
Yes. Thank you, Mr Mayor. It doesn't seem like long, if not long, since your last appearance here. We've sold it down, sorry we're here, but Marilyn was so serious. And I think you sent a letter explaining to them that you were in some comfort. Marilyn had been in some time and was more real than many people realised. And was put in a brave place at one point. And I think didn't want everyone to know this was serious as well. She even a few days before that last meeting, was hoping to get here, sadly. And she did. I was very pleased, actually, the number of people, councillors and officers who came along on our funeral a week or so ago. And I just meant if you were on a quitter visit and other things could come. I think that was an indication of just how, well, not the respect it had on her, I think, members on all sides. I was heartened at the number of members from all sides who contacted me in the days after Marilyn's death, and expressed their sadness and support. And I know that has something, again, has taken a lot of comfort from. I smiled a little bit since, you know, when Lillian mentioned her in prayers, because they didn't got her name slightly wrong. And whoever Marilyn is, she'll be smiling at that, because everybody did. It was a Hungarian name for us. And I know to my cost that I'm a Scottish woman, and I've got the price of it, and I believe that's exactly the point. It's always, obviously funeral, it's always sad, but it always saddens me that you then find out things about people you work with sometimes that you never knew. And I thought they knew Marilyn, and there were a few things that I found out over the day before. For those of you that were at the funeral, although I did, I'm repeating things, but Marilyn was born in Scotland, but she considered doing her thing, she came home and that's where her accent came from. She'd gone into a devoted family and spent much of her childhood away in Monty. And those of you that are in the home, come back and call it Monty. She joined the RAF at just seventeen years old. And I can't say what about now, and the fact she was promoted free from the United States when she served as well, obviously quite a good fact of work ethic. As well, you all know that she was elected in 2009. And she had several successes in Totin, and was typically modest about all of them. And I think, I think the one that will be a legacy is that she got the Totin men and worked her back into the post of director, recognised by the Royal Mail in Totin. And I know she was both proud of that, and I think that will probably be a role. Doesn't look more up to say that, but it will be considered as well.
Thank you, Richard, thank you very much indeed, Jackie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I hope you're pleased and prepared as well. Yes, I'd also like to contribute to Marilyn. I'm sorry that I couldn't make the funeral. She's so much a lovely gentleman lady. I met her on several occasions outside of this chamber, and always stood and chatted and went to her as well. I'm just pleased that somebody actually did tell me a few weeks ago how she works and how he's done these, and he wrote to actually make that comment, he sent that letter. And I promise he did, because, you know, if that has helped at all, if it did help at all, then I'm sure he feels. Sometimes it's better to keep things quiet, and sometimes it's better to share them. And I understand that people on my occasion, on my family person, who told you as well, they know who they are. But she didn't worry, and if we have to, we must certainly miss her if we know who that is.
Thank you very much indeed, Jackie. Bill.
So, Mr Mayor, yes, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take the opportunity, if I can, on behalf of not just the Labour Group, but I think all councillors, to say a few words about Marilyn. Who was, as most people find out at the funeral, quite a surprising woman, who certainly, who certainly, shall we say, had a colourful past that some people never do that. And, and all added to, to the fact that she was a highly respected, well-loved and very well-received member of this council. She was always polite, always well-mannered, and consequently, Mr Mayor, we more near lost very great, very great bonuses to the people, Totin in particular, Rockstone especially. But on that, there, Mr Mayor, the funeral, as I said, there were quite a lot of surprises that came out. And I'm sure that if Marilyn is looking down on us today, I hope that I've got a little grin when I do remember some of the things we did used to talk about in our quieter moments. Marilyn was one of the, one of the few who used to be talking to the shadows side. But please say about that the better. But, but, Mr Mayor, she will be saddened. She was a well-respected and most local woman. Please convey on behalf of the Labour Group, myself and all members of the council, officers and staff, our deepest apologies to the family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lloyd. Just to put the record straight, Richard, I wasn't at a time, I was in London that day, it was a long time ago, I was in southern London, P S B, I'm not there. It's like, I wasn't able to go to the funeral. And I'm sure many people will remember that. Thank you very much indeed for all the nice things I've been saying. I think we'll remember that moment for all time. Moving on to the agenda, do we have any apologies for our misses, Mr Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do apologise for councillor and honour the entire and every bit, so we're short on numbers, so I apologise.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I apologise for all this from councillor and all of us, and also for how you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, sorry, Andy. Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Apologies from councillor, Mayor and the group, you've done very well. Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is that, in the series of declarations, if you're just having an interest, would you pray? If not, we will run. On pages one to ten of the agenda page, just a couple of minutes of the last meeting, there's more to the Rockstone's issue therefore.
Mr Mayor, I propose that the admittance of a councillor, who is now in the seventh of September 2014, be accepted and truly granted. Thank you very much. It's a second for that. Thank you, Richard.
Now, speakers on this matter, can we have a short answer, except for the rest? Thank you very much. So, we're going to the mayor's announcements, and we have several items that constitute mayor's announcements, this is it. The first one is a huge, huge pleasure indeed. We're going to hand over the certificate to Mark Twenty-Five Years, he's had a twenty-five years in Heatonmont's service, continuous service to Rockstone Conservative Council by Angie Osmond. Now, I've got a few notes here, because I wasn't around at the time that Angie joined as a member. She joined with us in Monday, the twentieth of February, in nineteen ninety-nine, as a temporary for two weeks. And she then moved on, she transferred to a director by announce, working with John Smith, who I understand has become a lifelong friend. Later on, she transferred to director of management services, at which point she moved from a starting salary of two pounds ninety-nine an hour to a specialist honour, a principal honour, three pounds twenty-seven an hour. In nineteen ninety, she was appointed as a senior query consultant. In nineteen ninety-four, she moved to the post of senior secretary of admin officer, with John Fordham, as he was the manager. And then she moved to the position of HR and admin officer, and more recently, she's been HR and payroll admin officer, undertaking a variety of paper and payroll duties, which she enjoys very much indeed. Angie, we are delighted that you've been with us for twenty-five years in Heatonmont's, and I would like you to come to the floor to receive your congratulations. Okay. I was hoping that I could come and see you. It disappeared, you can't. Excuse me, allow a quick second. Do you want to just hold on? So, just to get away from the photo, guys, that certificate, I really hope you would treasure it, because in the same way that we've treasured you, working with Sue, we would love to be shared by, working with us. And there are some quite nice flowers on it. So, thanks. I understand that Frank Publicis wants to say something, so I'm not.
Shall I begin, Mr Mayor? Please do. Right. Well, visiting Imperial War Museum a couple of months ago, I saw this picture of workers at the Chilwell Shell Filling Factory. I purchased it, had it framed locally, and now bring it to our first citizen to hang as he wishes in the town hall. It's Chilwell. It's just round the corner from where I live, and it's part of the history of the borough and of the country. Chilwell produced half of the shells used by the British and Empire forces in World War One. Work was long and arduous, and not allowed to be interrupted, even by that terrible accident which took over one hundred lives. The picture shows some of the, mainly the women and men who worked there. Possibly many of the women had husbands, sons, fathers at the front. These civilians, Mr Mayor, were heroes, but they didn't think they were. I now approach the mayor to give you the picture.
War One. And of course, the emotions of disaster was thinking, and in nineteen eighteen, I've never let you tell you where it is, you're remembering all these incidents, so thank you very much indeed for that, Frank. Now, the mayor's announcements, I'd like, as you know, I'd like to give you a little go through of the mayor's engagements, of some of them actually, not all, but just some of them. And so here's a few pictures, you need to be looking at. This was a trip to the Brunkitt and District Provisal Hall, and I'm taking there with the president of this year, Patrick Paulson. And this was to celebrate forty years of the Brunkitt and District Provisal Hall. And as you can see, it's quite often, I'll take a, I'll take a check in one to hand to them. We've had three blue plaques available, you can see three separate pictures. This is the unveiling of the Ten Bell in Storm Street. And this was a fantastic occasion, on the evening of the manager of St. Louis. And the Ten Bell was actually with a silken roof in recent, and was used to ring the bell at ten minutes to the hour for the children who worked in the factories or the schools. The Heritage Open Bell was held here, organised by the Civic, Brunkitt and District, sorry, Houston District Civic Society, and this is the theatre chairman, who was helping open that event, and that was a lovely, lovely day. I went to St. Barners Church to see off the bike ride, who were riding to raise funds for the Nottingham, Nottingham Historic Churches Trust, and they raised something like seventeen fifty pounds from this bike ride on that day. The second blue plaque unveiling was outside Sid Standard shop, or that Sid Standard, this is his daughter Jill. And there were literally about two hundred people there on that occasion to remember Sid Standard and all that he did for cycling in the East End area. On the cycling theme, there was some training for people who ride cycles in the city to cope with chondract, and I went along to take part in that, in that process. And there I am with a hat on, protecting myself from pouring off. We had a fantastic, lovely nocturnal night tonight, at Whatmore Spinning, and this young man was making a bird box on it. And it really was a nice occasion. And there's a beautiful sculpture there, an old tree shone, this sculpture is something rather beautiful. So, if you're ever going to pass Whatmore Spinning, you're going to have a look. We had a visit brought from the schoolchildren in Goodison, and they came into here, and I told them all about what the mayor does, and they seemed to be quite interested. And I actually showed them the previous presentation, the one that you saw last time, and they seemed to enjoy that. Haddonborough Nature Centre, we went to Haddonborough with the pupils from the Sunside Centre Academy, and they learnt all kinds of wildlife things that things should do, and the nature is earth, and they had a thoroughly good time. I was delighted to be there. This was, believe it or not, the end of the Robin Hood Half Marathon. And here's Jamie, who was my champion, helping to raise funds for the charities that I support. And he doesn't look, he doesn't even look out of breath, does he? And he came on the Half Marathon in just under two hours, and he was very pleased with that. Now then, this was a fundraiser evening for Scousers, Exclusion Scousers, and it was a pariah evening, and I noticed that no one was playing the drums, so I decided to go and take part in it, and thoroughly enjoyed it, I must say, really, really enjoyed it. And that wasn't just, you know, for the fault of, that was absolutely, it really happened. This Scotsman, who was one hundred years, well, to his birthday, granted, in the Brunkitt Nursing Hall, and he was adamant that Scotland remaining with England was the best thing that could happen during the recent, during the recent debate in Bolton. Now, the third blue plaque unveiling was to commemorate one hundred and seventy-five years of Beeston Railway Station. And the unveiling was actually performed by Mr Neil Crosson, who you see in the middle of that picture, and David Hall, who's the chief executive of Beeston as well. And that was a lovely, lovely occasion. You know, I raised funds for charity, Peggy Kane there in the middle, she organised this, this tea dance in the Beeston Sports and Fitness Centre there, and we had a great, great afternoon, actually. In Eastwood, there was an event encouraging people to do the right thing in terms of medical things and changing their habits for life. And that was on my poker table. It was a bit high, I have to say. And I'm now bearing the consequences of that. And this is horribly white, it's so high. Because once again, you can see that we had another cake event, and I wasn't fuzzy at this time, but I did actually brew this one, one of my deputy mayorses made this one. And I did taste it, I have to say, I did taste it, and it really was very good. Beeston Ladies Provisal Hall came to visit me in the town hall here, and we had a nice, pleasant chat over coffee. And Anne Boris, the president of Beeston Road's Provisals, and she was very keen to bring her neighbours into Haddonborough Brown and see what the incredible town hall was like. It was a nice occasion. And then, very recently, we went to Chilwell for a tour of the depot, and to hear a lot, actually, about the Chilwell Umission disaster. And there's James Stern, the posse, and Irene Pelton, who were the main people that organised that. So, as you can see, I've been quite busy. Apologies, apologies to those people that have visited their events since no picture been put on, and I'm thinking of Eric in particular, because I had a lovely, lovely, lovely visit to John Gibb's school, he's a governor, but it was a bit too late to incorporate into this slide presentation. So, thank you for listening to that. Finally, Paul, yes, Paul.
Just a brief, brief points about the presentation.
Yeah, sure.
Sid Standards, who you are aware was a freedom of the borough, was tragically killed some nine years ago. But his wife obviously had a great deal to do with the work he did. I'm sorry to report that she was rushed into hospital, forgive me, this week, and she is making a recovery, I'm told. I would gladly convey your respect for this and that the council will be very grateful. I would be delighted to be part of that.
Thank you very much. I'm really sorry. I did actually see her earlier on this week, that the Beeston Voltsbury Seventy Fifth Charity Dinner, she was, she was there, sort of, just after dark, and I'm sorry to hear what you're saying. But Jill was there as well, she was very involved in helping with the building project. Finally, before I finish the mayor's announcement, I've been asked to point out that the D H Lawrence Heritage Centre is going to be lit up, you know, purple colour, and this will be for pancreatic cancer awareness month, which is November. And Billan will be turning on the purple light on the, on the first of November, the fourth evening of the afternoon. And so, if you'd like to go along and be there, be present for the opening, or turn on sometime June or November, I will make sure that it will help raise awareness of pancreatic cancer. So, thank you for that, thank you for listening to all of those things. That completes the mayor's announcements. And now, we have got a little bit of agenda, proper. I have a bit of agenda, in terms of the details, who, when Mr Mayor is going to be shot for the previous. I haven't quite, I wanted to.
Mr Mayor, I'm going to go back to the final, just before I do, I have to place on record again, the thanks of all the members to Angie Osmond, who quickly went and fought it before her time, she should say thank you on behalf of all the members to her for her outstanding service. In case you didn't know, she was sat next to Cath Aiken and Joan. Well, I used to call them the Cray Twins, you know. John Smith and Cath Aiken was the Cray Twins, to me, that's what I used to call them. And when Angie Osmond was with them, I used to call them the Beverlys. And there was Joy and Babs, and the one that nobody could ever remember when anyone quits, you know, there was always Joy, everybody could remember Joy, everybody could remember Babs, but nobody could remember the third one. I used to call them, that was the Beverlys. But, but, Mr Mayor, and I love this occasion, I'd say to convey our congratulations to, to Angie. I had my hair dyed to my platinum, the same as those Angie and Cath and indeed Joan had my hair dyed platinum in sympathy, so that we matched.
Before you move on, is there anything else to say about Angie? And I should apologize to all of you, for not giving me that opportunity, and we will be happy with the presentation that is in the first place. It's great, it's absolutely great. I think Rockstone Road Council is one of the best councils of the risk. And the reason, the reason it's one of the best councils of the risk is because of the fantastic employees who are actually happy in their job, and that applies to many, many of the people behind me who work there at Rockstock, and hundreds of prime users of them. So, here we go to this last one. Is there a statement for the, for the employment paper? Can I take that? Yeah. Is that okay? Oh, Richard, please.
Yeah, my point is, because it's very late, you have to be with a sort of me and me, and if you're a woman, you say, on stage for advisory committees, and how it goes on as a member, and they also substitute, substitute for, for, for.
So, can I have a short answer to the approval of that paper? Thank you very much. And now, the next item is a petition, there is a notice from Tom Ford, if you'd like to send it, but as you heard, apologies for absence, Tommy is still in well, but I think we're supposed to have presented on this behalf.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a sizable petition, and it's been raised by the shop of early, there's a positive issue of shop ability, and I'm sure members are very well aware, very good that they do. It is the fact that it's a family in two thousand and one, it's had its pendants, and it is always very close to this town centre, close to the former Rockstock church. And they're making a point, just boil this down to make it about, to make the point that they're now seven metres away from Rockstock, and that it has dropped significantly positively, and they're asking that to be promoted to a more suitable place, closer to Rockstock and to the car park, so that they can give the services that people need in here. It is very thoughtful, how much of councillors, as I've admitted, that try the services that I'm sure they enjoy.
Oh, sorry, it's wrong, yes. Yeah. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was going to support my esteemed colleague, Charles Ford, this evening, I saw him this afternoon, he didn't look too good, on this shop mobility petition. Now, on shop mobility, you couldn't wish to beat a more dedicated, enthusiastic band of volunteers, but they're very unhappy with location and the support they get generally in Rockstone Borough. I hope, post-tran, this council takes shop mobility more attention.
I hope, post-tran, this council takes shop mobility more attention. I want to see, get the support that everyone gives to their shop mobility. They have a dedicated town centre location. They have a lot more dedicated parking, which is a main complaint of our shop mobility. But they get more professional input from the council. And we strive to do that. And I'm sure most councillors, who might want to use it sometimes, would go along with this, with these sentiments. So, I definitely support a council force petition.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Frank. Um, I, I, I was anxious enough to be invited to go on to the development of Beeston Shopper Building in Cambridge. And, um, I can concur with you that the volunteers who've gone, uh, see, see third set of, uh, volunteers. Uh, they're doing their very best to do an excellent job. And all sorts of, actually, inside the building, uh, for some of the funding. Which, uh, Bob was right, a crime artist, who, uh, she was very much involved in this, I think, you know. Uh, so I think there are all the questions. Um, I don't think there are any further questions. I don't think there are any members' questions. So, a move on to the next one. Jay, Jay Fox, Deputy Lieutenant, is going to sit in to tell us something about what, uh, they do. So, Jay, let's take part in my process.
Uh, it's just a shop of myself. Um, recently, we've had a meeting based on young persons' health. Uh, and we're actually moving on to get some training to students and staff of schools. Uh, this can be resilience training and learning science of mental health in young people and issues that surround it. Uh, we are in touch with those groups that can help out this as well. Uh, it's in the age of DSM and above, because we feel that that's the main focus area in that. Um, and that our next meeting's on the eleventh of November, and that's where we'll be getting the rest of the council pulling back. Uh, the next meeting will also be our new nurse final engagement as, uh, the National Youth Development.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr Sanders. Um, portfolio, portfolio report. Um, the first report is on the 11th of fourteen, if you can read this. And Billen, which is our new strategic plan for the year.
Mr Mayor, the, the report is, as you say, contained a paper for the eleventh of fourteen, and I'm going to answer your questions while, while the report is, is definitely, uh, created today.
Are there any questions or observations of, uh, Bill in the conference board?
I just asked you that. Uh, how, how do you feel we're getting on with developing our brownfield bank? Uh, in, um, you know, how many applications have you got in that sort of thing? How do you feel we're doing on that?
Any other, uh, comments? Richard?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I was going, um, they need to ask Billen in, uh, Racton and Alasmore, maybe comments. Uh, we're all aware of the use of the token, uh, he's not now the only site on consideration, depending on how he's really been. He's in the base site, Michael might not get the HS2 section. I'm aware, uh, that Billen makes comments in the press. Um, recently, that if this stage is becoming really qualified, we're going to have it on that site. I wanted to clarify what you meant by that, what the times table will be, if there's any qualified sites from the four strategies. If my, uh, my belief that that was brought, I don't know if it was by the council or not, again.
Anyone else? Any questions? If not, then we can respond to those two, uh, comments, questions.
Sure. Mr Mayor, you know, on, on page thirteen, it sets out two quite large client applications that are currently having under discussion for a number of months and to develop as brownfield sites. That's, uh, the, the Hope Site and indeed Beeston Business Park. Both of which are subject to viability, uh, to viability studies. There is concern, uh, about the viability of the site because of the potential cost in developing the brownfield site, in particular the site at Boots, where contaminated land is, i- i- is an issue. What we're doing there for is, is, uh, in enhanced negotiations with the developers, and that went to cabinet, to set in motion, uh, the reduction in one or six contributions to offset any financial, uh, loss to ensure that the viability of the heating can go to head. We're also keenly involved in trying to work with the LEAP and other groups or organisations to bring in external funding to gap fund, to ensure that the viability goes ahead and that the site meets, uh, i- i- its full potential. There are, under construction or, or, or under, certainly under consideration at the moment, approximately one thousand five hundred houses in brownfield sites, uh, either, either in planning form, in major discussion form. But that will form the large part and the first stage of our hope and development through the core strategy. So, we're looking for about, about fifteen hundred. That doesn't, of course, include those sites that are on much smaller or, 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 these are major developments. The four major developments that we've got, which I'm sure you know where, the Boot Site, uh, the, the eight seven, the M seven, the Beeston Business Park. There's also Kindred Borough, which has potential in the site that, that was discussed about the, the gas site, the old beer that's called Beanworth Side. So, those four sites alone, Mr Mayor, would yield over a thousand, uh, brownfield homes. Uh, and that's what we, the, the plan is to, to get those developed first. And council junction, yeah, you're, you're quite right. What, what, what I said was this. If, for instance, if the token, uh, HS2 doesn't go ahead, the council decision that was made prior to this stands, as far as I'm concerned. There is no argument about it. There's no discussion to be had. The council had a unanimous decision to reject housing. That decision was only revisited once the token sites become the preferred option. So, for the avoidance of that, Mr Mayor, uh, it is my belief that should HS2 not go to Tote, and I don't believe that for one minute. Uh, I don't believe it will go to Bruce or anywhere else. If it wasn't going to Tote, then as far as I'm concerned, Mr Mayor, the council decision that we took prior to that would stand.
So, that's the first slide of the report. The next report is for the council that lies to thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll just present my report and, uh, try and answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Other questions on that?
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, fellow members, it is just that, uh, on performance, if I could refer to Pat, I realise Pat, you've given these figures, but these crime figures, you know, I still suspect, you know, they are disingenuous. I know the figures you're giving. Uh, I, I say this with, with quite a amount of clarity because in one particular instance in our district, uh, we're not being figured out, so that's what I was going to say. But in, in our particular district, twenty-four vehicles were attacked. Coming, that's upset into the motherless. Next morning, they go out on to work, the car suffered some damage. That's not nice. I mean, the police people go to work, it's not easy, but together the transport to go to work and the lander does something like this over now. Now, these twenty-four vehicles that were attacked, well, that's a crime. Or not, now, the issue's a police become a public relations advocate. That's written up as criminal damage. So, it's anything that's a crime. And in fact, I can tell you, allegedly, that was recorded as one crime. Do you really suspect that these figures are criminal? Bonjour. Well, I want to know this, Pat, uh, I'll be quick to the point. Could we please ask our esteemed crime prevention officer, Robbie, who has a dot, Paddy, dip in? Could we have some knowledge of figures provided, which give the public some confidence in knowing what the crime, crime clear-up rate is? The public just doesn't know. They come out with these fancy figures, month after month. In fact, they're telling us a bridge, the crime down, every time the police come, the crime down so much. Criminals are easier, they'll still be walking the street talking of something to do. Uh, please, Pat, can you get on to Paddy, and tell him, we want to know, as councillors, as members of the public, if you give people confidence, that we know there is some sort of clear-up. But with the film and all, we should be informed. That's, that's, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. It's, uh, I'm on page fifteen, Eastwood South. We had a long discussion on the Eastwood South problem at the scrutiny committee the other day. Long discussion on the decayed, long crime problems in Eastwood South without sizable improvements in the figures. I personally am pleased that councillor Bagshaw will be active in future deliberations with his background. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Steve, go on.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I couldn't disagree with the councillor Brownmore. Uh, we had a cap meeting in Beeston North last night, sorry, I'm coming on. Where, um, our local police labour team delivered the fact that crime had gone down in Beeston North. And it was accepted by a, a fair number of residents there. There was probably twenty-five there. That would be quite good for a cap. Um, and, uh, I would say this, and it's what I always say to people who grumble about crime figures. It's reported crime. If you don't report a crime, then it doesn't get classified as a crime. Now, if people want things to be, uh, appreciated in targeted and specific areas, then at least, the best will in the world will not know that crime is in those areas if people do not report the crime. It's as easy as that. And I would say, if, if councillor Brown really does believe that the police are now a public relations outfit, and I'm afraid to say that it's our government that have done that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Can't see anyone. So, Pat, you respond.
Well, I'm trying to, I mean, the, uh, the, the, the reported figures, I mean, the, the criteria for those are, 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 are indeed given by government. And unfortunately, they are changed quite regularly, and there has been a change recently, uh, which has impacted on, on crime, because in some cases, criminal, uh, one of those is, is violent crime. But, uh, I mean, uh, domestic violence is, is being, um, uh, timely addressed and recorded more. And also, violence within schools is, is also being recorded as a criminal act as well. So, that has led to, uh, it, it highlights issues that we, we, other partner agencies need to address as well as the police. So, um, I, I, I can't really comment on, on the, on, on, on the figures. Um, they're, they're as good as they are, but they are an indication to us. Uh, I mean, criminal damage is, is in there. And, uh, the, the police are, are quite proud that they are working hard to, in fact, to reduce the amount of crime that, that is in, in our area. And I, and I think most of, most of them do feel quite safe. Uh, and the law and order that we see from other countries is, is hard-won and it's, uh, I, I always thought it's worth spending money on, on, on maintaining it as well. It's something we should keep as a priority to us. But unfortunately, the, the police are seeing enormous foots to their budgets and, uh, I think this, this will not be good for our community in a way. Uh, I, I will, I, I will, I will ask Paddy about, uh, uh, clear-up rates. I know, they're, they're never impressive, are they? I think they're on to about thirty-five per cent of the night. Uh, but, but again, they're, they're doing their best to drive those, of the, I've always found the police, uh, in, in my meetings with them, to be, uh, uh, quite a, a positive, uh, organisation, who are proud of what they do. And, and also the police, the, the police staff, the, the police officers are, are, and PCSO's are, are very positive. Looking at that communities. Um, probably the usual term, um, I mean, it is, it is our one target area in, in, uh, in, 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 in the, in the architecture of Brockville. I mean, o- o- other, uh, other areas have a lot, lot more target areas than our Sainsfield, the Mansfield, and, and, and Leaning Headland have got more target areas than us. But, but it has been an issue and, and, uh, lately, it, crime, crime did increase. But there has been a lot of concentrated effort by all the agencies to, to address those, the issues in that area. And, and crime is, is coming down again. I, I think it's an issue that it is actually a town centre that does suffer from a, a degree of, uh, uh, shock. Um, and increasingly, they've found out that people actually travel to Eastwood to, to steal. It's, it's not actually the residents. So, that is actually quite a difficult, uh, issue to, 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 to address. Um, so, Steve, um, yes, I, I applaud what you said. Yes, the, the, the police are, are positive. I know, I know we are, uh, we're proud of our Beeston team, aren't we? Um, and they, they, they work with the councillors and, and try and help residents as much as they can. I hope I answered the question. Thank you.
Hi there, I was going to go on. The next portfolio report is a resources portfolio in Depp Watson. Uh, Mr Mayor, is that my report started? Hey, Dan, cheers. I'm happy to have two questions. Uh, Paddy, go on, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, Mr Mayor, uh, first of all, um, Pender Watson, I, I must agree, and I'm very happy about the way that Brockville Mayor has come out regarding, um, the collection of recycled rubbish, all types of rubbish, and in textile situation, uh, collection. First of all, it's very easy for people to actually understand. You might look at it quickly first of all and think, oh, where am I? Well, actually, if you've still got your card at home, it explains all this in full. If you've still got your card, um, from this year, on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see which section area you're in. And then you go to the appropriate box. Uh, but first of all, now, I think, I think this is very well done. And, um, if you have a problem, all you have to do is get online or phone up, and they'll sort out if you're not sure which area you come under. And, uh, I was very glad to see that the, uh, it was taken up at the front of the actual magazine that it said inside details of the year's collection. Very well done. I hope it continues each year like this.
My question is, uh, possibly page twenty, top of page twenty-one, um, portfolio holder, now, it's one more people who are affected by dementia. Um, is the portfolio holder aware that the Health and Social Care Information Centre, who collect data, have a leader in Nottingham West Medical Commission Group, which in fact is one of the smallest in the country, and collectively in England, has a rate of more point eight per cent of the diagnosis of people aged over fifty with dementia, which makes this the provision of the third highest in the country. And however, is he also aware that recently, it was announced that GPs will get fifty-five pounds for diagnosing a patient? When you look at all the hard work they've done, GPs in Nottingham West have been doing, they've actually gone a long way down the route to diagnosing females, therefore they won't be getting the fifty-five pounds if they've already done that work. So, the doctors who haven't done it yet, who will be getting that money and the services will follow out of that money that are intended to provide better services, which of course, we, through the work that, um, councillor Patrick, um, through the scrutiny group, we have actually got, literally, been able to work very long in this whole, uh, dementia. But I also just mentioned here, this portfolio holder aware that the clinical commission group has been nominated for Health Services Journal Award uh, through its work with this council, through the Health Partnership, through the work on dementia, the retirement living project, and the, uh, lifestyle funding with fifty thousand pounds, which is allocated through the Health Partnership, uh, to smaller groups. Um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, she's got, referring to, uh, Accessible Britain Challenge on page twenty-one. Uh, Maggie, would you agree with me that the failure of the net to consider premises for Beeston shop mobility, that the tram needed to change was an opportunity lost?
I, sorry, I just wanted to add that we had another dementia friend session with twenty-two people. Some, the joy was some from the council, some out with the council. We've also, uh, been asked to provide dementia friends' awareness for a group of deaf people and also for, uh, the volunteers in the new creation sector.
Thank you, Charlie. Hello, what's, uh, fine, please.
I give that on the dementia. Friends on page twenty. I just want to say, Kay, that, um, it's becoming obvious that more and more money is being spent. I just want to say, David, that it's becoming obvious that more and more money is being spent nationally, like on muscle-building activities, and swimming, and football, and that. But not enough on improving it and maintaining mental health. We should be setting an example. Thank you.
Any more comments, questions? If not, David, we'll ask you a spot.
Right, thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you, everyone, for your questions. David, thank you for the comments regarding Brockstoun Matters. Yet it's beautifully laid out and nice and easy to follow. I would pass them on to Detective Harwood, but I should say, she's heard them directly. And I'd like to call the staff who were involved in producing that. No doubt Greg will have something to say about recycling, a lot of it will be brought in a minute as well. I'll deal with the lecture at the end. So, Steve, accessible Britain and shopability being a missed opportunity, it's one of many missed opportunities with the tram. I do hope that in due course, there can be, after we've got the tram up and running, there can be inquiry into the many, many things that have gone wrong in organising and providing what should be a really useful system. Hopefully, people will learn from their mistakes, because we can hopefully avoid other communities having to go through what resident increasing in particular had to go through over the last twelve months. I am very concerned, just widely slightly, that all of the money that comes for compensation is for businesses, and I think the people who suffer most are the residents, and they really should be compensated well. What has been done at the Pauline, Pauline Park, and the Astro Seven Trent is the latest demonstration of that. Moving to the other issues that Jackie raised, the Health Services Journal Award, yes, I am aware of that, and I think it's right to actually congratulate Jackie Castle Williams for her role in that. I don't think that the CCG would have been nominated without her personal input. And so, well done, Jackie, for that, and for all that you do as our health lead. Coming on then to dementia, and if I can pick up the various points that have been raised all together. And I am now one of the dementia friends of this authority. There are many of us who are doing it, and I hope that we will continue to do so. In fact, for all your work in organising that, and in making it accessible, not just to the councillors, but to wider community. We have high aspirations that hopefully we can achieve. Living with dementia, caring for people with dementia is a huge task. And any support that we as a party can provide, and that we as individual members can provide, will be greatly appreciated by those who have to cope with dementia on a regular basis. In terms of the figures, Jackie, yes, we have the third highest rate of diagnosis in the country, as opposed to the third highest rate of prevention, which I think is a very different figure. I have to say that the suggestion that doctors pay fifty-five pounds for diagnosis really troubles me for a number of reasons. One, it is getting more people who haven't done it so far. And I've got a lot to say about mental health later on. But secondly, I think it will put patients off going to the doctors. If they are worried that the doctor is going to be diagnosing them as having dementia just so they can get an extra payment, then people will not go to seek treatment that may need to happen. I think this was wholly missed or seen in our idea, and we're down to the wrong way to go. And I have made my news very soon to the health leaders on that, and I hope that the members will make their news as well. In terms of, thanks for comments on spending more money on mental health or building up mental health, again, we've got to mention on that, on the agenda, yes, I agree. We need to put money into mental health. It has been overlooked far too long. Actually, physical health and mental health often go together. But I'm no object to people being fit and to improve in their, as we put it, improving their muscles, maintaining their minds can go with that as well. But I'll save any more comments on that to the agenda. Thank you all for your questions.
Thank you, David. Can I just say that on behalf of the council, I'm actually sounded a bit emotional about dementia and about the willingness of Brockstoun for a council to do all we can to aid people with the softest of disabilities. So I just want to remark to people about that.
Let's move on then. The next portfolio report is Greg Marshall, who is in our portfolio, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Present my report starts on page twenty-three, twenty-seven, and I'll take some questions. Actually, a couple of points I'd like to raise before I do that. One is, we talked a couple of times tonight already about those who have a duty to public service. We have, at an elected level, of course, Marilyn, who dedicated herself to serving the community. And we've had the long service award for Andy Oswald. And of course, this is the first council since Mike Taylor retired from director of the Environment. I'd like to, on record, my thanks for his efforts over thirty-five years and his dedication to public service. I only took on this role relatively recently, and as he was heading towards the twilight of his career, he didn't have to take the interest or the help of the act. He'd helped me settle into the job, and I'd like to thank him for that. With that, of course, we welcome Shane in as chief executive and new head of Environment as part of that role. He's already helping out once with an issue I had with a governor on a Chirwell school. So I look forward to that pretty cool relationship continuing. The only other point I'd like to raise is the one around recycling performance. And I mentioned in the last report that the figures weren't looking great for our recycling performance entirely. And these have been substantiated again in the more recent figures. I am cautious about using phrases like year-on-year trends. And I'm not quite sure we're here on, have a year-on-year trend, but we certainly have a decline on last year's figures. And there are some reasons for that. There was the Sainsbury's taking, a commercial decision to take the Britain Recycling site. And one piece of news is I'm hoping to, in accompanying Paul Summers, to meet with Sainsbury's to look at if there was some kind of compromise or arrangement around uplifting back the recycling rates at that Beeston site, which was very, very successful. And the other point of information was, I attended the Joint Waste Management Council committee meeting with the rest of Nottinghamshire councils two or three weeks ago. And the trend we're experiencing is certainly mirrored in other authorities around Nottinghamshire. We're actually performing better than others in that respect, but we shouldn't rest on our laurels. And as a result of that, we're entering into a piece of research to look at compositional analysis of waste streams with a view to then target people across the authority to remind them of the importance of how they actually recycle themselves, with a view to what they can do to get it. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions? Jill, please.
Comment, I'll do a question. Mr Mayor, as Walk Council, councillor Vernet and I also attended an October event at Brockstoun spinning horse, which was well-attended and very enjoyable. And as the mayor said, the calming is excellent, and I always think it's a good idea to maybe to hold trees in that way. Once we were there, we talked to several residents as to what they would like with the nearby rock or green. Their comments were varied, and it would be difficult to leave everyone, but it is good that money is being spent there.
Thank you for that. Any other comments?
It's in connection with the Royal Cemetery, where it's been quite clear that scientific clearance has been completed. While I was up there today, it certainly hasn't been completed. There was a very serious unfortunate incident up there. It was forced us to be sharing that field. And I notice now, thankfully, that it has been fenced off. But one of the horses unfortunately told fall against a tree stump that had been left, and as a result, had to be cut down. It's very unfortunate that the fence is there now. And I would just ask that in future, if we've got any similar things, that we can ensure that animals are separated from it. Because they have now taken the trees, so it's all day-to-day. But unfortunately, as I say, that incident has happened, and I think with visual care, you know, we need to, you know, these people have rented that land for some time, and I think that it should be looked at.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, David, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's about the Monotown recreation ground at Tolden. They had it open there, it was very interesting. But I'd like to give a heads-up to this, because anyone who hasn't seen it, it's well worth a visit. It's ancient history of the borough, Mr Mayor. The other thing is that the friends, they call the site up between visits and between works on it. So you can see it once, and then you get people come to see you. You take them down to look at the site, and it's gone. Oh, that's something you've got to watch. Well worth a visit. Glad we're supporting it.
Thank you. Any more? I can't see any more questions. Greg, please respond.
Not sure there were any direct questions, but in general, thanks for your passion, your comments from your residents and your ward around future investment opportunities or some things you've been doing around whatnot. Graham, I wasn't aware of that, and it's crap printed, that something has to happen before then that kind of like, that action is taken. So thanks for making us aware of that. And I'll make sure that it kind of acts on those kind of lessons in the future. But thank you for that. Frank, thanks very much for your comments, your support, your comments around, so, no, obviously previous contributions. I'm pretty keen to let the quality of our all-party work, after everything's spoken around the board, so, so thanks for that.
Thank you very much, David. Now, the entire isn't here. If someone was, it's actually, you're bringing people together for a report.
Yeah, yeah, Mr Mayor, if you'd like to answer your questions or to address your comments.
Any questions? No, I'll just report. If not, we'll move on. The jobs and business portfolio, Richard, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Greg Johnson, I have pleasure with the jobs business, the great portfolio, which is thirty-three percent free. My only questions or comments are this portfolio.
Thank you, Paul Muller. The report on scrutiny, is anyone standing in for Brownmore today? Did you say anything about the scrutiny, the obvious scrutiny? If not, we'll move on. We have two speeches I would like to have on board, Stuart Gordon and Margaret Henry. Stuart, if you want to discuss this.
I'll let Margaret do this.
Thank you. I'm going first to Stuart, which is me too. And speeches are actually linked. As I spoke to council before, we do have problems in our ward in the Daisy Farm area and at junction with Acre and Amley with continued flooding events. And Stuart is going to speak about this in more detail. But I would just like to raise my thanks to Ruth for the time and effort that she has put in in trying to help us on this issue. But because of the overload on a dated system, we have an area of land that the other side of Smithhurst Road that does have current fund information for ninety-one houses. And I see that that is back in for renewal, because it's up to its three-year period. But we do have on that land incidences, reports to us as Walk councillors, of foul water and sewage coming up when the manhole loads at the wrong time, as it were. Now, this land backs onto the council's playground area. And I'm looking at Greg, because that's my next thing. Playground remains dated and not fit for purpose. When it was first put in, they say it was much smaller, but we've had lots and lots of houses built. We've got more pending, and two baby swings, two other swings, a couple of these springy bent things and a playground. It doesn't look good, it's not adequate, and I am appealing these again for some money to put that on. Because we were told, and we have sat and waited patiently, that those ninety-one houses, section one O six money, would go to replace in that playground and modernise in it. But unfortunately, that land's up for sale again, so I can't see it being built on in the near future. But we do have, across the other side of the road, where the two bits of Acre are due to be joined up if the funding commission, funding application comes back. There is an area there that is an area designated open space. Amazing, you look, probably using some of that land, but either another play area in, or put a bigger play area. Because this is a massive estate, and it is for a lot of children. And I know where my son lives, on his estate. They don't have to get in their cars and take children to play, because there are play areas scattered all the way through the estate. There's also a school, so they know how to get in their cars to go to school. And what I'm saying is, a lot of us on parish councils and town councils have applied to do neighbourhood plans. Now, I know there's pressure on the council from developers, as soon as the course strategy goes in, we need to put these houses, and that argument's gone. I'm not making that argument about numbers of houses. The argument I'm making is one that I think we should all consider in our areas, that we should use the neighbourhood plans, we should cooperate with our neighbours, and use local knowledge to inform decisions, and come up with developments that will benefit not only existing residents, but new residents as well. And hopefully try and reduce car journeys and things like that. Instead of always just going with what the developer gives us. So I would appeal to the council leaders to look and see if we can think outside the box a bit on this. And see, you know, if we can use our local residents to inform decisions on their area that makes it better for them and newcomers to live. Because we don't want, and I don't want seeing any newer areas, the problems we have had in ours with the flooding issue. Nobody's saying that houses shouldn't be built, but we need to take care of the infrastructure before that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill, please.
Following Margaret. My reason for wishing to speak is to highlight the issues of the flooding in the lower part of the Daisy Farm estate, which affects residents of Gaughes Close, Thorn Drive, Wallaston Drive, and Fissel Close. New thought in the great part of Breezy. You might remember, I previously brought to everyone's attention, that twenty-four properties told internally that were badly flooded on the twenty-third of July last year. And again, flooding took place affecting the same properties on the ninth of June and the nineteenth of July this year, thankfully restricted to their gardens, and internal flooding being narrowly averted. Before I move on, again, I would like to thank our chief executive for the effort she has made on behalf of residents in bringing together agencies, it was hoped, right in made in finding a permanent solution. Very good mind, this has now been going on for fifteen months. That's Seven Trent Water, Nottinghamshire County Council, the Local League Blood Authority, and the Environment Agency, and of course, this council. It is now some fifteen months since the first flooding occurred. Despite several meetings with the agencies involved, little, and I feel indeed no progress seems to have taken place, in instigating a full, comprehensive... instigating a full, comprehensive investigation of the causes of the flooding and a permanent solution. At a PowerPoint presentation by Seven Trent Water on the sixth of August, they acknowledged, they admitted to include Tyrion Street, which was built on the old George Osborne Penis site. And the street itself resembles a ski slope, very steep. And showers of surface water seemingly passing through Gorse Close unhindered. When challenged on this by me, Seven Trent Water advised this feature didn't alter their conclusions. So dismissed the big fact of the flooding. Residents already affected by flooding and the prospect of future flooding taking place are fearful that the withdrawn application to build thirty-three properties on existing informal open space land, occupying an elevated position above their property, could be on the brink of being re, this application, on the brink of being reintroduced. The likelihood is the accompanying drainage specifications could be incorporated into the new application submitted for approval. Any drainage plan submitted might be looked upon as premature and prejudice a more comprehensive solution to improve surface water and full sewer system over the wider area being implemented. Particularly if any new scheme required work to access the informal open space land and ongoing into the Smithhurst Meadows Nature Reserve. Importantly, this has already been mentioned by Margaret, but I'll say it again. It is necessary to consider the site of Smithhurst Road, which is a natural continuation of the Smithhurst Meadow Nature Reserve, which has planning permission for ninety-one properties as yet underdeveloped. And this site, as Margaret's already mentioned, is up for sale. This site is downstream of the flooded properties and is connected to the foul and surface water sewers serving in the lower part of the Daisy Farm Estate. The recent flood events placing extra pressure on these systems has led to sewers blowing and discharging contaminated water and raw sewage around the site. If nothing else, this underlines the need for an independent report to examine the drainage systems serving the wider catchment around Daisy Farm Estate before schemes in isolation are contemplated. I have already touched upon the problems created for residents by the configuration of Tyrion Street, which incidentally remains unadopted by Nottingham County County Council. Remedial landscaping at the bottom of Tyrion Street to restore a level area to resemble its pre-development status, incorporating infill from the soakway, would go a long way to protect the four bungalows which were previously flooded at the bottom of Gorse Close. Finally, you like me, must have great sympathy for the residents affected by flooding, their concerns over obtaining competitive insurance for their properties, and their fears for heavy rain is forecast. To give them some comfort, the sooner an independent civil engineering company is appointed to examine the wider drainage issues, the better. But I'm interested, such an appointment was made by Ashfield District Council, Seven Trent Water, and Nottingham County Council, and Environment Agency last year. Civil engineering consultants U R S, which is a very big American company, are looking into the drainage systems in Huddell, following floods there in July two thousand thirteen. Hopefully, something more positive will ensue sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you to both of you for acting for the hard requirements. Let's move on to the item thirteen, the numbers you've put on outside bodies. There are three reports in the papers. The first one is entirely removed. The matter of the charges, which is exactly what we're going to take into account. If there's any questions on that, that is possible. If not, the second report, Marius, Marius White, on Greenwood Park Chief Board, as I finish thirty-six. Do you want to speak about Marius?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your opportunity to speak, it's just a joy to be on to these green meetings. I did say in the report that it's just a snapshot, because I think you, but I believe she'd really filled in the two sides of eight objects. It's just good to see our old councillors break together. The way they do is incredible.
So what are your questions on that report? The part I'm doing, I suppose, the nature center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'll stick very blunt and say that myself, that councillor Watson, councillor Carey will sit on this board. And I'll just try to pick out some of the highlights really. I mean, there's such a lot going on at Attenborough. So I've just tried to pick out some of the things that they, you know, the sort of new things that they've been doing. The Sun Martin Bank can hide, obviously, has sort of been a massive project for them. The A T project is allowing them to do a lot of outreach work with the community, school groups. And I'm just sort of trying to highlight some of the things that are coming up. So following on from the fiftieth anniversary, which quite a lot of councillors went to earlier this year, there's plans to celebrate Attanborough Nature Centre's tenth birthday in March. And I hope that, again, councillors will give Attanborough Nature Centre its support. Actually, one thing I didn't pause is it's, it's been really high up in the kind of, like, an award. They're in the, on the first or second top attractions in the East Midlands. So I think some of the board members also make the point about how important Attanborough Nature Centre and Reserve is, you know, to Brockstow really, and it's the economy. So it's, yeah, it's been sort of a privilege to sit on their board. And I hope everyone continues to support them.
Thank you very much. I think the Attanborough Nature Centre, the Attanborough Nature Reserve is a jewel of ours. It's fantastic. I showed you up to here, people have one, school groups who have been in touch with us. And I think also we should recognise the contribution by the Nottinghamshire One Land Trust to contribute in all our state activities. Joe, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chancellor. Who thought in nineteen twenty-one that we would have started something like the farm, stole the land to the ground people, that we can have this wonderful thing of Attanborough Nature Reserve there. People all over the country heard of Attanborough through the nature reserve, which is, I mean, I was going down there one day when a man came, rushed up to me and said, where is it? Where is it? And I said, what, what, what? He said, the white heron. I said, the white heron? He said, I've just come from Scotland. Quite, where was it? I said, oh, I said, it's down there. What, Scotland? Okay, trust me, it's a little, anyway. What I was going to say, it's a wonderful thing. And what we're doing here in Attanborough is really great. But one thing I've got to complain about is, and it's an old chessler, that the bikes that go down there are ride so fast that, you know, there's many accidents that happen. I was bent down, I'm doing my shoelaces up, and three bikes came past, almost abreast. This was on Sunday. And they said, oh, you know, get out of the way, why are you going down there? And I said, you know, I've got to do my shoelace up. I believe it's getting so bad now with people that somebody's put some tacks on the, and people have been getting punctures. Now, women are going down there with their prams and they're getting punctures in the tyres and the bikes are getting punctures in. I can understand the frustration of the pedestrians. There's signs up that say, please take care in this pedestrian wall. And they've built recently, and spent a lot of money on some green posts. Now, I don't know what these green posts are. Perhaps Mr. Barber can, councillor Barber can tell us. Some green posts. And I was told that these green posts that they put in can slow down the cyclists. But it doesn't. I wondered if you could, Stuart, pick out that for us, please, to see that there's more things put up, more decisions put up, I don't know. But I'd be excited to go so far so I can even read them.
Thank you for that. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'd like to speak as both fellow boardmen and as somebody who regularly rides my bike around Attanborough, along with my children. They go for about five miles an hour, and I should look to keep up. I'd say I can't disagree more. There are some people who ride bikes too fast. There is no justification whatsoever for the wanton vandalism, which causes an awful lot of difficulty, not just cyclists, but others on the, on the paths, and causes an awful lot of expense, having to tidy up and to clear the rest. All it serves to do is to cause inconvenience, cause problems, and to seek to justify it by saying, well, cyclists are going to pass. It's utterly the wrong approach for this, this council to take. And I can't understand the actions of anybody who chooses to commit crime as a way of getting their way. And I hope they're merciful. This council has a very strong message, that we do not support vigilante behaviour, to put it at its absolute highest. And currently, wanton vandalism, which would put it at its most basic.
Just briefly, absolutely certainly agree with councillor Lewis on that point. And also to point out that these attacks are extreme hazards of wildlife and dogs and other animals who are easy to, who are, you know, ingest them. The police are looking out for whoever it is. The Catholic there have a bank full of tax that they collected, and they keep as evidence. Hopefully, we will find the person who's doing it. The police will find them and prosecutions will follow. But the cycling issue, the chicanes you're talking about, I must admit, some cyclists came to me, I'm a very keen cyclist, came to me and said, we don't want the chicanes. And I disagree. I said, we do want them because it's a reminder that there are a lot of people on the map. Okay, you say it doesn't work. I say it does work to an extent. One thing that I did find, and I was discussed it by, was one of these boy race cycling sites were actually putting down times you do on certain routes. And one of them was along Attenborough, Miss American site. And you put in your times on the satellite thing off the phone. I mean, okay, I do it occasionally, but not a lot better. I'll do it on the roads somewhere. It's more suitable. But, and I wrote since I emailed the site and asked them to remove it because I thought that was too clear of purpose. And it is in there, which is still there unfortunately. So there is a magic return to causing a lot of trouble. And the Englandman American website. Thank you. This was my information. Before I bring Andrew back in, does anybody else want to say anything about this? Andrew, please.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't realise it was going to be such a controversial event. I'm doing a, you know, kind of presentation about how important everything is at Attanborough. I'd just like to be sure, Joan, that this does come up at the board meetings. So myself and Eric were at the last one. And, you know, I, you know, they go through, you know, obviously most of the comments that they get at the nature centre are complimentary. And, but they're aware, they are aware that there's a, you know, there's a kind of, there's a sort of conflict, I suppose, between, you know, dog uses is the other one. So the complaints they get are about bikes and, you know, so first and foremost, it gets a nature centre. You know, the people who ride their bikes through it or take their dogs for a walk there, and I do both, with lots of bags, I should add, to carry around to the dog, and as on the lead. But there's all, you know, there is, there is that conflict. In terms of the, you know, they've also made a point about the tax being put down. Because what's happened is women with pushchairs have got their tires punctured. So, you know, they're kind of, you know, publicity out to discourage people from taking that action. And they have got that. Time trials that Steve mentioned were also discussed at the board meeting. And they've got that taken down. So they've contacted, yeah, they've contacted the website and got that taken down. But it is a kind of, it is an ongoing issue. And I suppose what I would say is, I think it is a minority, you know, a minority of people that cycle too fast through there. You know, and a tiny minority of people who choose to sort of act as vigilantes. And as I say, most of the comments that they get are very positive. But they do take those sort of issues seriously. So they are aware of it. And, you know, we'll make sure that as councillors, we'll, we'll make sure that it keeps on the agenda of the board.
Okay. Well, thank you very much indeed for everyone who spoke about Attanborough. Very much indeed. Before we move on to the series of motions, we have an item fourteen on a number of previous petition allegations. This is a notice report, it's on page thirty-eight. Does anybody want to speak on this topic? Charlie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed a live recording. I'm not being officially notified, but I was reading a report somewhere from all the councillors to say that his workover was such, it was quite heavy. And among the stuff that randomly raised that week was petition from these. But I know it's going through. I read the appendix two. Alucia was third, the third index is far too short. Frey's school was too short. Shoppers School was too short. They don't want to be, they need to be able to walk around in shop talk with and by whatever. And to be quite honest, over the last few months, we've had some great shops opening up with our boys coming in, which has been a great treatment at the time. But even got somebody now who's doing the retro gear. And a lot of people are still interested in retro gear. And I hope they're going to do quite well with it. Something else that, obviously in this has mentioned Brockstow car parks are free for now. I don't want to go into that though, because I think that would be made of the time and the place. And quite honestly, I would say one thing, I voted no, there's a stamp fair on some of these. And it's three hours, three parking there. And for the fourth hour, I think it's different. So we need to look at where we're doing parking at the end of. But this is going through. I've had no official notification from about three weeks ago, it was a compression model.
Okay, thank you. Just to say that the shop that sells the retro gear had a little one one window display. And actually, for the price, it used with little one window competition, which I was a born in charge of. So there you are. There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a very important thing to say. I'm pleased to see this is our family then, because we did this. Because my concern was always the fact that when people came with a petition from their resident, what happened to it after it was presented? You know, people used to say, who are that? That's been put in the bin somewhere. So this is thought, and please to sit. Also, I'm a person of the very noughty now. And I didn't realise that Brian Rumpire wasn't here. And in the last year of overview scrutiny, we had a committee meeting last week, a few of us attended. It was very interesting. We are going to discuss whether we want to be run by a cabinet or committee. And I can assure you, the information and the things we've got to read are absolutely mind-bending. So what I'm saying to you is, watch this stage.
Okay. Two.
Regarding the letter two, regarding the financial transaction tax, it may be wishful thinking, but I was under the impression the leader of the opposition was Ed Miliband and not David Miliband.
I was just wishful thinking.
I have actually a report on the petition which I presented, which we need to attend. The county of Attanborough approached my people at Kingly School, who had got a petition asking the council to put an opening through a fence which was fenced off, sorry, which fenced off Lartville Estate and Corby Avenue. It was a way the people should not tell you what to school. They had to climb over the fence and residents, particularly elderly residents and people with babies in front, had to go the one-way round. And it is quite a long way round. I'm pleased to report that the work has now been done and everyone a long way round. I'm pleased to report that the work has now been done and everyone is happy. My residents have had a great time.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to make an additional comment about the notice of motion from the ninth of June meeting, which was approved by the full council on the twenty-third of July. It does seem that the letters dated the twelfth, I was going to mention about the Freudian slip about the movement of the party. It does seem like a long time for action to be taken by this council in response to any notice of motion that we actually debate quite strongly, passionately about in this council. So I would hope in the future that the responses and actions would take place quicker. Thank you.
Anyone else? Richard, please.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, it's on the same note. Much as I accept I didn't support the motion, the amendment motion was printed on page forty, the letter's printed on page forty-one and up. There's a important principle here. There's two bullet points within the letter. There are six within the notice of motion that comes voting on. I don't think the letter actually accurately reflects the motion that we passed. You wanted it in mind, the way I would, if it's brought down now, I wouldn't support it. So maybe actually if it was brought down. Now, council votes on something, that's what the council votes on, which we asked for a letter to be very good to raise it, but we vote on, I would suggest, if it looks at that, is councillor Oakesley's motion. And I think perhaps should be asked whether he is against the motion, the letter, and if not, I would suggest it's still going on, Richard.
Well, I think both of those things are my fault because I was asked to, just, you know, direct the text for the letter. So I suppose I was trying to keep it short in terms of that it might actually get read. And the other, I mean, I was kind of on school holidays from the twenty-third of July, and I came back after being on holiday to sort of try and catch up with the work. And so it's my fault for the delay really. I didn't manage to get it into the last meeting. So I'll go first, count, sorry, give it to him, he's charged.
Have we finished the citation yet? All are in the right place. We now move to the first of the four motions, item fifteen, item fifteen. A motion brought by the Liberal Democrat group. I guess David Ross was in for this one.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I present the motion that set out in item fifteen point one. I completely very blunt, or very briefly, that we've got the people on the best people place to decide how the motion should be run, not centralised officials in Whitehall. Every local authority in the country should say exactly the same. And what the motion is called for is a genuine devolution of powers so that the default really is local people making decisions, not London. We are, in this country, far too centralised, far too much is decided by a London elite who have very little interest to be broken what happens in the larger parts of the country. They control the money, they therefore control the power. For genuinely devolution to work, not only should the power to make decisions come to us, but the money to then put those decisions into effect. And so the motion does call for a devolution of power and of politics because they do go together. It is viewed by some people as being very radical to change what we've had for a long time. But actually, the decision to change what has happened in Scotland seems to have been taken by three quite worried party leaders in response to one slightly accurate opinion poll in the run-up to the Scottish independence referendum, which thankfully was won. What the referendum usefully did though, was aim to highlight the issue and be to show that people actually have a genuine interest in their communities and in what happens. And also, the sixteen and seventeen laws have a genuine interest, but that's a debate for another day and possibly another place. People in Rockford have no less interest than people in Scotland. People in other communities in England have no less interest than people in Scotland. The difference is we've not had the opportunity to influence how we are governed and how we are run. So the motion calls for that. And calls for it in a prosecutable convention so that there can be proper discussion, proper debate about the best way forward and not have a one-sided, fits-all approach imposed from the centre, which whenever we get change instigated by Whitehall, it's inherently Whitehall with all the power, plus with a lot of the expense, but actually the ability to do anything. So this motion is calling for genuine power to come back to local communities. I hope that the motion behind it, the sentiment behind it, is something that everybody can support. And I look forward to having an interesting debate on it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, Mr Mayor, our second motion is the one to speak.
Does anyone want to speak on this motion?
Mr Mayor, I remember the days that you're talking about quite well, in the, in the Scottish referendum. And it suddenly got like a Dutch auction, where, you know, you can have this, you can have that, you can have so much. And I was actually watching the debate. And I actually felt embarrassed for the sort of government of Britain. I actually felt embarrassed for all party leaders holding a cheap and shoddy auction to try and convince a few people that they were serious about devolution. And I remember quite well, Mr Mayor, the issue of Scottish devolution first coming up under a Labour administration at the Welsh Centre and in this regional government. What we finished up with, of course, was a non-elected regional government. I am, I am and remain a firm believer in regional government. Democratically elected, free, open elections to determine who should, who should actually look after their own regions. It's quite simple, it's quite a simple philosophy. I actually believe what I say in devolving power to local people who have to make decisions to democratically elected representatives. It's called a democracy. I think that's what we call it anyway. Although, to be, to be fair, our democracy seems to have been so cheapened in the last few years in particular, by a shoddy debate that had no real interest in devolving powers whatsoever, just a series of wish lists around which people thought there was a cut-off point. Yes, we've cracked it now. It won't be about Scotland going independent. So I welcome the opportunity to have a fair and open debate. And unfortunately, ten years ago, almost in a day, the people of north-east of this country had a free and democratic election for a regional government and rejected it. I hope now that such is the state of debate, that such is the opportunity that power would be devolved from, from London to the regions where people could take decisions in a free and democratic way about the decisions to affect the people that we represent. Now, nothing could be clearer in demonstrating all this than, as I say, the luxury of opposition, the responsibility of being in leadership. Yourself and councillor Jackson often laugh and joke about what one's been like in leadership, when they're leadership at a county council, where you think you're going in with a manifesto, and you look at the manifesto, it's contrary to everything the government tells you going to do. That's what happens. That's what happens about freedom and democracy. You know, you go out and canvass on doorsteps about what you're actually passionate to believe in. And then they put you in a position of responsibility and then say, no, you're not doing that, you're not doing that, you're not doing that, you're not doing that. You're going to do this instead. And then they'll impose you by cap the amount of tax you can charge and raise, and expect you to perform wonders and criticise you when you can't. How is that a free and open democracy? And I'd like to see it extend a franchise daily. Not just discuss about cars, but actually discuss about local tax raising powers. And that incentivises the local communities to carry out those improvements. You cannot make policy. And every government I've ever seen since the successful movements straight after the war, from nineteen fifty-one onwards, have failed. The sixties come close, the sixties come close to succeeding in house building, about early communities building what it's actually needed through urban districts. That's now changed. The whole philosophy and ethos has changed. Grossly oversensitised because we're all saying, look, it's not about democracy, it's not about freedom, it's about calling the electorate that somehow, go and put your cross against somebody, and you've got to say what happens in your local area. Absolute rubbish. Absolute rubbish. Democracy fails and it starts failing at the House of Lords on unelected bodies and goes right down the line to local democracy, alleged local democracy. If you want it, let's replace the House of Lords with a second democratically elected tier of regional government and give powers back to local communities, not an unelected bunch of bodies, several of which have already served time in prison and are seen fit to lord it all over again. It's wrong. I fundamentally passionately believe, Mr Mayor, in the right for local communities to take decisions on behalf of the area, the community that they represent. Unfortunately, it isn't like that. And if you look about our democracy, look at the map of the political map of Britain, and if you look in the middle of Westminster, there's a great big white block. Because we don't have elections in Westminster. Did you know that? We don't have elections. You're appointed. Officers and members aren't actually elected by the ballot box, they're unappointed. And it's time for this country to realise that if you want power to be devolved back to people and to be proper representatives of people, then you've got to fight for it. And you've got to find your own politicians and you've got to find the civil service, the hassle laws, and the vested interests that sets us back. It's the one thing in this country, Mr Mayor, that I would change immediately, and I would abolish the hassle laws and bring the democratically elected second chamber responsible to the people and responsible and accountable to those people who put it there. It's much more where a standard in politics.
Yeah, I mean, it was the legal court, basically. I don't disagree that something is wrong. But reading this motion, I agree with some of the centrists behind it. But it reminds me of a line from Yes Prime Minister where they said, something must be done. Ah, this is something, let's do it. I think this would be the wrong thing to do. And I think particularly the bullet points under the front, they're what the council believes. It's not something that I agree with particularly the one about contemplating more power to English MPs is not the answer now. I wouldn't word it in that way myself. But I think probably the simplest, quickest, easiest way to achieve change, and actually by far the most comprehensive way would be to have English voters for English doors, would be to have, whatever you want to call it, the Scotsies call it a grand committee, I think. But to have English members of parliament voting on English MPs, you can live away with the nonsense whereby MPs from Scottish constituencies can vote on the NHS in England, whereas English constituents, the MPs can't vote on the NHS in Scotland. The very last point you talked about, a widely participative constitutable convention. If you want to ensure things doesn't get done, then let's have one of those. I suspect that would last about three parliaments and cost several tens of millions of pounds and get us to absolutely know that. So I find myself unable to agree with this motion ever since. And I don't say that because I think we don't need any change in our country. We do need to make some changes. But I don't think bringing in an additional layer of regional, local government, call it what you will, is necessary. I don't think it will be cost-effective. I don't think we see any savings from local government or from national government. It would be a little tear in the middle. Probably just restrict Oz and give us even more edicts to follow than we get from central government in Europe. So I think that really isn't the answer. It's not something that I can support. It would cost hundreds of millions probably. And where would, where would the Treasury get that money from? They wouldn't remove it from central government, but it's been removed from local government. We find ourselves burdened of everything that we're doing now and even that's one because a huge chunk of it would be top flies and sent to some unwanted regional agency, call it what you will. Lea mentioned the referendum that was held in the north, the west, north-east. One of, one of John Prescott's brainwaves earlier in the Blair government, it was rarely rejected. There was an appalling poor turnout. And amongst that, there was a, obviously even a small percentage of people who thought that this was a remotely good idea. So let's, let's show that, that, you know, someone's conscious of the issue, what we actually are doing, that brings some good attitude when you put in a great, great list.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. But first of all, I'd like to directly say that I don't think this motion is safe, that we want an additional layer of government. In my opinion, if we should be the county councils and not have that middle tier. I would agree with you there, which you thought, that, you know, we need to actually completely and utterly look at this again. I don't think, I don't think it's wrong that we have a situation in the United Kingdom that we have three parts of the United Kingdom, a different voting system which is fair. They have, will have, I looked at the tax raising powers. Yet the biggest component of the United Kingdom is promise a grand committee of English MPs sitting in Westminster. How that helps Yorkshire, the North, the West Midlands, the East Midlands, Cornwall and Devon, I do not know. I don't think it will help. And I, like you, Milan, was actively standard to see the party leaders. And I do disagree with David. I don't think that poll was inaccurate. My son is in Edinburgh at the moment. The flavour on the ground was very much in favour of a yes vote. And I think that the leaders of the political parties can see that. And I think they actually promise more than what they can possibly deliver. And I think the Labour members in this chamber will be the first to acknowledge that the Labour Party in Scotland is going to pay a very, very heavy price for that. And you can actually see that in opinion polls at the moment in Scotland, where they've gone down from forty-one percent to nineteen percent in the space of two months, or all to the SNP. And that is a real lesson to politicians that in the base of these things, you have to look carefully at what you promise. Because unless you deliver them, the people in Scotland are going to be, are going to be annoyed. And there's a prospect of them demanding another referendum. And then there is a prospect of them actually voting for independence. That's the situation within Labour. So what do we do about England? Well, England is now exposed in the UK with a lack of true democracy and a total lack of accountability. Mr Mayor, quite rightly said, if you think that the local government is in charge of its destiny, we all know, around in this chamber, that that is not the case at all. We are not in charge of our own destiny. We are told what to do. Local people are told what to do. And that must come to an end for England, as it has come to an end or will eventually come to an end in Scotland and Wales and Northern Ireland. If we don't do anything, if we do think by heart measures and have an English grand committee sat in the House of Commons, the only people that will benefit from that are UK. They will use that to their advantage and whip up English national sentiment to their, for their own gain. And we have to avoid that. Because whilst the referendum was won for the unionists, it was only just won. I know there was a ten percent difference, but ten percent in politics is a, well, that's a five percent I know there was a ten percent difference, well, ten percent in politics, and well, that's a five percent swing. Well, that's a big difference. But, you know, we have really got to do something. We've got to have the same voting system as the rest of the UK. If it's good enough for Scotland, Wales and Northern Ireland, then it's good enough for England. Why, I'm heard, are they any different to us? In fact, if anything, the diversity of political parties now really demands we have a different system. We have the situation, if you believe the Ashcroft Polls, that one constituency in Cornwall, UK and St Albans, would be won by the Liberal Democrats with twenty-three percent of the vote. How can that be democratic? It isn't democratic. Because seventy-seven percent of the people that constituents didn't vote for you. It's just nonsense. And it's got to be done properly, it's got to be done sort of, done properly. Everybody had their say, and at the end, England has got to have the same as the rest of the United Kingdom.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments in response to, David talked about the Westminster Elite, and about passing power down to local areas. And I think it's important, one important issue that I think this motion doesn't address is the fact that I think politicians should reflect the communities they serve, and I think they don't. I think you're right about the Westminster Elite. So about current MPs, four to enter Oxford or Cambridge, eighty-six used to be lawyers, ninety used to work in politics, and only twenty-five used to be manual workers. Fewer than one in four women, sorry, fewer than one in four MPs are women. And the average age of an MP is fifty following the, during the election of two thousand and ten. So only twenty-seven minority ethnic MPs in the House of Commons, just four percent of the total, compared to an adult ethnic minority population of more than eleven percent. The problem is, I think that we are much better, actually, at local level. So the last time that there was a national census of local authority councillors, they found that the average age of a councillor is now sixty. Only thirty-one percent are women, and again, less than four percent come from an ethnic minority background. So I think we've still got the same problem, that our politicians don't reflect the local communities. And I think that all parties need to do more to increase the diversity of their candidates.
Thank you very much, Lina. Anyone else want to speak on this motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Mr Mayor, you were within a short distance of losing the United Kingdom. The bulwark against this was the Scottish Labour Party, and they've got difficulties at the moment. The movers of this motion, their own party, David, was missing in action on the Scottish referendum. Something I would like to mention is that your motion needs refinement, and also some hard facts. Now, the best exposition of localism I've heard in the past ten years was Graham Allen, a Labour MP in Nottingham. I suggest you go and listen to him. Find more of what he said, he really makes a lot of sense on localism. Localism, you know what I mean?
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we move on to the votes. The votes who are in favour of this motion, please raise hands. The votes who are against this motion, please raise hands. Okay, is there anybody upstairs? On stage? So the motion is carried. It was seventeen votes to fifteen on my side. So we now move to the second of our four motions, which is on page fifteen-two. Again, one for everyone.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is one certainly that I hope everyone will support. Hopefully, people received this afternoon a email, as I said, about a number of case studies that have been provided by citizens of her eyes and by our officers here, of problems that are accessing mental health services. Many apologies that's been suffered so late, unfortunately worked just over too quickly. But what this motion is about is making sure that sufferers of mental health problems are treated properly. If I stand up and say that I have a hernia, and I'm going to have an operation on it, which is accurate, then people appreciate what that involves. It means that there's going to be surgery, and everyone understands, and I'm going to be off work for a while. People understand that. But if somebody says, "I have a mental health problem", we all take it a bit embarrassing and not know how to respond to it. There's no reason to behave like that. Just because you can't see the illness doesn't mean it's not genuine. There are still too many times that people with mental health problems are regarded as being circus, or regarded as being troublemakers, rather than anything else. I'm delighted that the governments are taking this seriously, and have announced commitments to speed up treatment, so that all children will receive, or would be able to access specialists within two weeks. And in Rockstone, the county council estimated that one thousand three hundred children have mental health problems. The difficulty though comes in actually getting referred, in being recognised as having a problem. And what the reality shows is that far, far too many people are just being passed from post to post, and nobody is willing to take responsibility for providing them with the help that they need. It seems a fall between GPs and the county council. And it's a case for this that I've circulated out. We actually had GPs telling people with mental health problems, "Go to CAV". Well, CAV are not trained in that. They do their best to help. Our officers do their best to help. They're actually doctors who would get keepers. Should be accessing the services that people need. What is desperately required is a one-stop shop, so that there is one pathway for people to take, to get help, rather than just being passed from post to post, rather than saying, "Well, you need to go there", or "We'll send you to here" or something. One clear way where anyone can get help. And at the moment, that is sadly lacking. The motion calls for the county council to accept it, because it falls on their responsibility. I would love it to be our responsibility, so we could actually make it happen. But we don't have the legal power to do that. What we can do is lobby the county. When we get our officers going above and beyond to provide help to people, when we get CAV going above and beyond to provide help, clearly, the help is needed. But the people who should be doing it seem to be missing in action. If I can give a couple of illustrations of the problem. There was somebody who came to see the CAV here, who initially had been living in Everwash, then in Rockstone, passed from post to post, actually ended up being so ill that they were taken into hospital, treated in hospital, and discharged. And by that point, it's early today, they couldn't access the emergency accommodation that Everwash had in the end been provided to provide for them. And ended up having two days living without sleeping, on one occasion at Hammersmith Nature Reserve, or another in a park bench in Moneta. So that was someone who desperately needed help, but there was no way to access the help. And where there is an immediate crisis, it really is difficult to get anybody to lift a finger. The frustration felt by CAV, the frustration felt by our officers, is very clear from talking to people. The other thing I didn't realise, talking to a lady who has mental health problems yesterday, was the changes that are going on at Mill Street. Now, a couple of years ago, the then-organisation at the county council talked about closing it. There was a campaign, and they decided not to. But what's actually happened now is that many of the services are being moved out of there. And people with mental health problems are now being directed to Barncote in Chilwell instead. Barncote is great, but it's great in what it's aimed for, which is people with learning disabilities. That's something totally different. And it's like saying to patients who've had a heart attack, "Well, you need to share awards with those who are suffering from a bulge". You wouldn't do it. It is absolutely wrong. And it's the same approach. It seems to be this, if there's anything mentally wrong, we've all lumped into one category. And that shouldn't be the case. The lady who raised this with me yesterday summed it up brilliantly. Talking about the county council, and the decision initially to evolve, to not close Mill Street. She said, "The council gave me a life, and now they're taking it away again." That is the reality for many, many people with mental health difficulties. That particular lady, quite an intelligent lady, she'd written to the county to complain, to object, to move the thing out of Mill Street. The response she got from the county council in these terms, "You're always welcome to go somewhere else." That is not acceptable, that is not helpful. People with mental health problems are being let down. We need immediate action to help. The portfolio there, seven cases, that, the fact that I can fit two of them in the portfolio, but there's more as well, of people in Rockstone in the last few months who've had trouble, major trouble accessing services. It ended up costing an awful lot of money, because what should be minor problems get escalated. And the situation ended up costing far, far more than it should. I've been real concerned about this for some time. It wasn't until I started digging really, and realised how bad the problem was, that it is a really, really major problem. Hopefully, this council will speak with one voice to say it needs to be sorted, and it will push and push and push until it is. Because, not to bludgeon you, it will end up with people taking their lives. It will end up with people, if you've already seen people fall through the cracks, and not get help that they need. And so, hopefully, ladies and gentlemen, you will all support this motion, and we can continue to talk, not just tonight, but looking forward as well, to make sure that those who are really vulnerable get the help that they desperately need, and that the government connects to providing to them. So I will move the motion, set out in paragraph fifteen-two.
Thank you very much indeed. Is there a second of the motion, please? Jackie?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to second the motion, and I'd like to speak out if I may. We've mentioned earlier that I am nominated healthily for this council, and as such, I sit on the Health and Wellbeing Board. It used to be the case that I would regularly bring a report to council meetings. That seems to be now on an annual basis. So you're perhaps missing out on some of the information I thought you shared with you. But I'll just give you an update on what the Health and Wellbeing Board are doing in terms of mental health. At the September meeting, the mental health strategy was agreed. Further information will be coming in December about links to commissioning activity and ownership of the strategy. They're fine words, aren't they? Strategies and commissioning activities, they don't bring you up to people on the street. And I have to say, if people can write to strategies, I hope I'm very difficult to annoy them, because they're not very in touch with the people on the street. There's also today an update on the review of the Health and Wellness and Mental Health Pathways. We had at the Health and Wellbeing Board some time ago, a workshop where people who work with children and young people with mental health issues came and presented case studies. I would have been ashamed to stand there and present those case studies, frankly. And I was absolutely appalled, and spoke immediately to the director of Children and People's Services, and various others, and a full and detailed review is underway. And hopefully, that work will be coming back soon. Nottinghamshire County Council has also published a draft local suicide prevention strategy. So, you know, there'll be a document somewhere, a strategy that supposedly prevents people from committing suicide. Not very helpful when you are, wherever you are, in a rec room, or downstairs in the CAV, or at our reception desk in council offices across the road. So I want to just tell you that at a recent Rockstone partnership meeting which we had, we had numerous professionals sitting around this table. I was there chairing it, I was there, then representing the mental commission group, representing the public health, and two community psychiatric nurses who work in police custody. They didn't know what the work about the police, the police didn't know what their work was. The public health woman who was sitting over there didn't understand any of it. The public health people here weren't sure about any of it either. And the woman from the CCG said that there's a system-wide problem. So nobody really knew what anybody else was doing. Because you've got primary care, which is your GP, and other services within there. Then you've got secondary care, which is normally a hospital, which closes wards. And then you've got healthcare trust, which kind of sits somewhere out there, and nobody actually seems to know what goes on. And people who come, these very nice community psychiatric nurses, were all shocked when Anne Marie Thorby explained that we need a referral process. And they said, "Oh, you can refer through the MASH". And I said, "Well, we tell that, but it doesn't work." So once a crisis, nobody actually knows who to refer to. There is a crisis team, but that's located in secondary care. And you can only access secondary care once you've been through primary care. Or GP. You cannot go direct, you need to say, just as you wouldn't be able to go direct into the hospitals to have open-heart surgery, you can't go direct into the crisis team or healthcare trust. So it is all very, very complicated. We were shocked, because what we need is a pathway. We need to tell their number. If somebody's in a little crisis with mental health problems, we need to know what to do. Certainly the staff at CAV do. So we were going to take this forward from our partnership, and through the help of the partnership that I chair as well, we are going to be having a workshop where we can bring people together and actually try and unpick who does what, who's going to take responsibility. It's all fine and dandy, having a strategy on the shelf somewhere in public health. But what does it actually mean for people in our communities? So that's the problem. That's the bit we need to unpick. So I'm more than happy to support this motion, and hope that we actually get along with it. Thank you.
My question, your question?
Yeah, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion, so you might need to sort of help just the process of that. So do I just say, is everybody right to speak? Or do I just say what I'm going to amend?
Simply tell us what you want to say.
Okay. So I would very much like to support this motion. However, I think that it lays the blame for what's going on in mental health services at the feet of the previous Labour government, and actually previous governments, without mentioning the fact that there's been, you know, newspaper headlines about cuts over the last two years that have left mental health services dangerously close to collapse. I would therefore like to propose amendment to delete paragraphs D and F. I also think that we need to say something about resources. So I'm happy to warmly welcome... So I'm happy to warmly welcome the announcement by the Deputy Prime Minister on the night of October. As I understand, he announced 120 million additional resources for the initiatives that he was talking about. But actually, mental health services have been cut by 2.3% over the last two years, which equates to £253 million. So the new money announced by Nick Cag isn't really going very far towards making up for the cuts in mental health service provision. So I would therefore like to add into the paragraph after F, sorry, sorry, not that paragraph, the final paragraph as the motion extends. I would like to reword it to say that the council remains concerned that too many people in Brockston have difficulty accessing support services and calls on the government to provide the Nottinghamshire County Council with the resources to be able to undertake a review of the problems that exist, et cetera, et cetera, and be able to afford to implement those plans. And I'd like to add a final paragraph in terms of where this money's coming from. It's our, you know, just to say that Brockston Borough Council reiterates its call for the government to introduce a financial transaction tax on shares in other assets such as bonds and derivatives in order to raise 20 billion additional revenue in the UK around them.
That's relatively complicated. As I have discussed it, you want to delete paragraph C?
No. It's not that complicated, sorry. Delete paragraph D, delete paragraph F.
You want to modify the final paragraph in this motion.
Yeah.
The words that you read out, you want to provide the council with the resources to undertake, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you want to have a full paragraph at the end, is that right?
Yeah, just to say that the council reiterates its call for financial transaction tax.
Thank you. Would you understand that? Yeah, okay. Is there a second of the last amendment outside the House of Commons break? If you want to speak about break now?
Thanks. I mean, not in any significant terms, but I guess there's the primary reasons, pressing social reasons why we need to address mental health issues. I guess in addition to that, it is important that there's adequate resource and funding. Part of the reason for that is an economic driver, if you realise that mental health issues are now overtaken by pain as the number one cause of absence in the workplace across the public and private sectors. So there's lots and lots of reasons why we need to have a good, adequate resource, address and treat mental health issues. I admit that the primary driver must be the social and personal care drivers, but there are economic issues around the importance of supporting important motions like this.
Thank you. Can I go back to the original proposals and ask them whether they wish to accept this amendment? In that case, from now on, we're debating the amendment as amended. Anyone like to speak on that?
It's just a very brief appeal really to everyone here. I totally agree with what David said and I totally agree with what Anthony Greg said. Please, can we not vote and see this as a party political issue? Can we please see this as people who are in real need in the borough? They need the mental, they need the mental health help, they need the help, they need the, the council needs the money, the council can't do it for nothing, they can't do, they need the money. So let's just look at this and let's see, people there need help, the council needs money to provide their help, the council can't provide their help and that just gets dropped and that brings the politics to a halt. Now Steve, do you want to speak?
Yes, well, I think more to write this down, but I agree with the council of all that. But yes, it shouldn't be, this proposal shouldn't be about party politic. I would be happy to actually exclude D and F, but not to add the bits that the council has put in. The reason for this is because that in itself is critical. Because basically, and I'm sure you will accept this on the Labour benches, that your leadership have said that if you are elected next year, you will balance the budget. You will not be able to do that without making further substantial cuts. And so, you know, it's worse really. And what we should be focusing on, the fact that the county council now has substantial funding for public health. And I'll come back later when we discuss a substantial motion again. And that money is there, the question is how is it being used?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I appreciate you now speaking about the amendment. And I think I know where it is coming from, but it does, it does really politicise what was originally proposed, prevented by council. What, it was a very simple statement. And to then bring in some of those negatives in, I think, I think won't do this council justice. Mental health is a massively complicated subject because it reaches everyone. And there have been problems with previous governments in compartmentalising mental health into the critical, social and primary care. Put it in a box, go away and sort yourself out. So, and that's now we have problems because of the lack of the street. We're getting a rational strategy for helping people along a pathway from seeing their G P actually into critical care, into reception or emotion society, and then social care being part of their recovery practice. So what I would like to do is to propose further, an alternative amendment. And I'll leave you that and then I'll give you a few words as to why that further amendment, I think, will help us to get rid of this, this problem. Can I? May I put the further amendment based on the result of this amendment?
We have to do that amendment first.
Okay, I'll speak again when we get to that.
Okay, well, as I said, I would like to support this motion. I'm happy to just delete paragraphs D and F, if that's acceptable to remove with the motion without adding the sort of more complicated amendments to the last two paragraphs.
Right, and is that seconded? Okay. I understand this, that the original agenda is able to change.
Clearly a constitutional issue here, for that though. There's a procedural issue in it, but for that to be seconded, I just need to understand whether our colleagues on the other side of the chamber will be happy with that proposal. Because we're trying to do this in the interest of the full council of course, in the interest of business and the interest of the parliament.
At this, at this point though, I take it that you're simply indicating that if there was support around the chamber, that you would, that you would change your amendment to simply delete paragraph D. So you're not making that proposal just yet to a formal debate. Well, do you want to?
Just in terms of the approach I, and really the object of that, I'm not comfortable to remove those two paragraphs because I think they provide an accurate statement of history. What I would be happy to do from paragraph D would be to remove the word labour. I deliberately wrote about government, had an X, so we were talking about all previous governments and, you know, I included in that until the month of October of 2017. And, yeah, but certainly I practiced the word labour. Historically, it was in the Labour government to introduce targets, but if that's seen as being a criticism, it was intended to be. And I would be happy to delete that word, but I think the rest of the paragraphs are unimportant of the motion.
Who else wants to speak at this point?
Mr Mayor, we understand the need to, to where they're sharing this mental health services for people in the, in the authority and the country. Which I think this exactly sums up the Scottish debate at the moment, which was extremely critical. Somewhere along the way, there is a noble cause here and yet we seem to be bogging ourselves down in minor detail about where, I don't know what meaning it is, it's a sentiment expressed in the resolution, Majesty. Really sometimes, if you want me to be hypocritical of anybody's, you know, to put down, it's quite easy to do so. But I actually look at the sentiment of it and express, because that expresses the theories of the council and that's the way I look at it. But what I want to do in the few minutes that's available to me is to talk to you very briefly about a briefing that I took to our own group members at an away day that we held at Dern Ash. Because there seems to be a total lack of understanding without we trying to patronise to some people in the room about what it is that we're talking about. I want to take a few minutes of the time, if I can, in your time, to explain to you what happens and where we think the problem's going wrong, much of what Jackie said, we can fundamentally agree on. But the problem starts with, with the health service. The problem starts with a person's G P. The G P can and has the power to refer a person to increasing access to psychological therapies, which is cognitive behavioural therapy. The G P can refer to secondary services provided by the N H S Trust and the trust provides a range of services in Brockston. What's it doing? It provides community psychiatric nursing team, community mental health team, assertive outreach team for people with complex needs, early intervention in psychosis for young people with experience of first episodes, the psychologist, it deals with eating disorder service, crisis team, personality disorder network, outpatient clinics, psychiatric appointments, et cetera. The problem starts with the G P. Well, okay, we're going to disagree then. The other section that's responsible for, for a person's mental health is the social care element of this. And they care for people with mental health difficulty in Brockston. That's excess, clearly, not the county council customer service centers. It's actually written before we chat about the chief executive of county council and the head of social services. Not what people think happens, it's what actually does happen. They will refer on table, refer to Brockston community mental health team. They pick up, refer not via a single joint point of access, which is run by health and which social care professionals attend. And that, that provides a range of services. Reablement, that's early preventative support. Access is not determined by eligibility. It actually works with the co-production project, again, to keep people as independent of services as possible with their own community support networks. The co-production project, which deals with or tries to prevent social exclusion, co-produced activities and support services, anyone eligible to attend, no eligibility criteria. Three, assessment of the Community Care Act, they have for that a personal budget and commission services eligibility determination. Assessment and support for carers, safeguarding investigations and safeguarding care plans and approve mental health professionals for statutory assistance under the mental health act. And that affects in Brockston, something like 59 people, approximately 60 people have a personal budget. Four people in process have been assessed, 21 are being reviewed, 19 people in reablement, five in safeguarding investigation, 185 people on co-production services and 111 floating supporters units across Brockston. Very quickly, in a report that I took about 30 minutes to do, at the away day. The problem is, again, Mr Mayor, is that this is not what happens in reality. In reality, we know that, that the public funding is under pressure and it's unrealistic to expect that adult social care can take on any more cases. However, there are things that we've talked about, things like pathways, provide proactive medical pathways for people with mental health problems, yes. But there are also other recommendations within that report that look at an example of negligence. Appoint in contact to provide help and orchestration of support from a range of agencies. There is also training for G Ps and frontline officers in spotting and dealing with people with mental health problems, so there's a better first line response. Specialist mental health backup and advice for officers. And that includes the voluntary sector for what have intervened very difficult decisions about what is best for people in extremely difficult positions in which they are not qualified to undertake or actually able to give the best advice. Now, to me, this is, this is where it all starts to fall apart again. But much more consistent and longer term funding is required and indeed for voluntary organisations who can support people's needs that actually need help. Now, we're not apart with David on the recommendation. We talked about getting somebody to see someone with mental health difficulties within two weeks. But what we're asking for in Brockston is a single point of contact that works across the agencies on a multi-agency approach that is available today, now, not in two weeks' time, you may need mental health services, but in today, when you actually need them. When you're sitting in our reception and not spoken to anybody for five and six hours, which happened a few weeks ago, when we have had violent or aggressive people who have got nowhere to go, no home and no food. We get to a situation whereby two weeks is inadequate to meet those needs. That's the only reason, David, I just think there was some of the wording in there. While two weeks may seem a guarantee for whatever reason, what we're talking about here is a single point access where people have access when they actually need it. Now, that's the bit that's going wrong. Lots of agencies, lots of organisations, whether it be the voluntary sector, the health service, the doctors, whether it's a borough council, county council, social services, all these people need a single point of contact access where a person could be referred, where it can actually pick up a service that it needs, the person needs at the point in time that it needs it. That's the issue for us. That's what we're trying to look at. I've got a paper going to budget on the position of that support through Brockston, through our Brockston working group, a report that commits our resources, commits some of our resources into a frontline mental health team for responsive. Now, the question in debate that we're having is where does that person best fit? Within the authority, within the health service, within the county council, where? That's the debate that we will have at the budget time. But that's our involvement and that's one way we can do this. But it's too simplistic to take an issue about saying, we know we want two weeks or whatever time it is, or take that word out here. What we're asking for, Mr Mayor, is recognition of the need to support mental health team, mental health and care workers and those professionals and indeed the voluntary sector who are dealing with frontline mental health issues. And you can put that into as many words or as difficult words as you want to. Personally, I don't care. But we have to create in this council chamber, it will be about that single point of contact where people can access the need when they actually need it. And that thing will be a first. And as for the 55 bad, I actually understand when I, when I got involved in this, what the government were trying to achieve and why. So I'm necessarily agree with it, but I understand why they did it. Or we're saying, Mr Mayor, is that there are an increasing number of people coming to this council across the road with serious mental health issues. And unless this issue is addressed, it will get worse and will continue to get worse. And I think we all, our elected members, have a moral responsibility to take on this issue and deal with it best we can. I, I don't care what words you use, Mr Mayor, whatsoever.
Make a point of order, Mr Mayor. What are we discussing now? Are we still on the amendment or are we all just...
Amendment.
No, we're on the amendment.
Anyway, so Steve is correct. This, this should not be a political issue at all. We, we all know that we are failing many, many very, very vulnerable people within our, and nationally. and nationally as well. You mentioned that presentation, I was at that presentation as well, along with many of the GPs who now hold the budgets for the area from the CCGs. And they called the mental health service the no service, because they refer people who are then not taken, they are refused, because there are not the resources there to cope with them. The resources involved in some of these cases are absolutely immense. They went into a presentation of one sixty-year-old girl who was taken, phenomenal amount of time to try and address the issues that were rather before suicide, like the suicide attempts. It was a tremendous failure on all our pots at the end of the day. But the CCGs realise and recognise that they now hold the budgets, they don't know how to finance a better service. They haven't got the money, they've been passed on the budget with a ten percent cut to what was there originally. They haven't got the money to finance a better service. What else would they cut in order to do this? So I would urge all members to actually support the amendment as it stands. It's not ideal, but I don't think the original motion was ideal either, because it seemed to point the finger at the county council. The county council haven't got the money either, so what's the point of demanding that they do? You mentioned Middle Street. Middle Street was never a statutory responsibility of the county. It was something that was actually provided on top, but with the enormous cuts that they now have at the base. It's the truth, I was involved in it. And that was the reality of it. They haven't got the money to finance it properly either. So I would call it, if you don't accept this amendment, then modify your motion to actually call on the government to find the money to provide a proper service for the people that we are seriously failing.
Thank you, John.
I really want to speak to the motion, I really want, not to any member.
Mike, we're on the bench, is he there?
Yes, I'm sorry, I really want us to get onto the motion, because I'm very passionate about this. I wish to speak to the motion that we all agree, and get the politics out of the way from here.
Thank you. Castle Jackson, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm a little bit staggered actually by what County Council has just said. He is right that Middle Street was never a statutory service. He was quite right, I know my members, in this, to complain very hard of when the previous County Council administration consulted on what's in Middle Street, one of the options was to close it. I'm giving credit for campaigning for the County Council to keep it open, and it wasn't a statutory service then, of course. I'm disappointed that a lot of people who campaigned to keep it open four or five years ago have been very silent. Now that the new administration capital is proposing to close it, not consulting on a range of options for it, but proposing to close it.
That is not true.
Please, please, John.
But proposing to, the County Council's proposing to close it. It was mentioned in there that the council would keep it open. They've got a choice. Castle Carl mentioned a few minutes ago, the enormous amount of public health money which is being ploughed by the county council, and they've got a choice in where that's spent. One of the ridiculous things they've done with that is spend it on pay bills, to the obesity. Now, look, we all agree, obesity is a problem. But really, you meant in a pay bill, because the only reason someone's obese in a certain area is because of pay bills, that's complete and utter nonsense. That was about shitting public health money into something else, it was never designed to pay bills. It was absurd, it was absurdly ridiculous in twenty-eight years, it was absolutely ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. That's where the money came from. County Council also decided it was going to pay a living wage. That's a choice that they made, no problem, a living wage is a nice thing to be able to do. It's a nice thing for those members of the, Castle Rex, as I mentioned, and the way it came. But it's a nice thing for the County Council to do, and it's a fantastic thing for those few thousands members of staff who would earn a living wage. But instead of that, you could fumble Middle Street three times over. Middle Street is vital, we've heard about people who are on the verge of committing suicide, and people sadly did commit suicide. You could keep, this is not related, our weight, you could keep these mental healthcare units open rather than pay the living wage, that's a political choice. One thing's very nice to do, one thing in my mind is absolutely vital, let's keep these places open and pay the living wage as and when it's affordable. At the moment, frankly, it isn't, and if you've only got the money to spend, well, let's spend it in the way that's going to do the best possible, that's possible for the people that we're representing. I agree with the mover of the original motion, that the amendment, in the motion as it's written, and I wouldn't support the amendment that's in there. I would suggest we move on to vote on the amendment now and get on, according to that clock, it's twenty to eleven, so I would do that, and we get on as fast as Patrick said we did debating, with the substantial motion, and they're in the first place.
Thank you for that. Despite that appeal, I would like to, anybody else who wants to speak on the amendment, speak on it. It looks as though no one wants to. So we'll now come to the fault of the amended, of the amendment. So who's in favour?
Make a point of order, what is the amendment now?
It's the change.
It's one thing, it was as originally stated. So it counts for such, I don't know what you're going to do.
So I was happy to, I was happy to, I was happy to go with the compromise that Steve Carport brought, and delete paragraphs D and F.
Right. So the proposal of the head of the House decided to change the amendment by simply deleting paragraphs D and F with no further changes to the bottom. Is everybody clear on what the amendment now is taking?
Stephen, the first amendment had a second amendment. The proposed amendment to the first amendment was not seconded.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll be in the house, but I'll get back in my office. So we're clear, the amendment simply is the original motion with paragraphs D and F deleted. So both people in favour of that amendment with paragraphs D and F deleted, no changes to the House of Neagh. How about any people abstaining from this? The voting is for the amended motion, seventeen votes, and against the amended motion, eighteen votes.
What's the board chair?
I'm all right.
Yes. On the previous motion, the four against was seventeen fifteen, and there was one abstention for the voting. And that total was thirty-three, and you just conducted a vote that already total was thirty-five.
Agreed.
Thirty-five is a correct vote. I don't know how that could be, but thirty-five is a correct vote. So on that basis then, the amendment is lost, and we return to the original motion of the debate. Would someone like to speak on the original motion? Castle Jackson, please.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, members of the public, I'm very glad this issue of mental health has been raised. And I speak both as a councillor and as a very long-standing CAD worker, and as a trustee of this council, on the Citizens Advice Bureau and a friend voluntary action based in. For a long time now, we have seen month by month, a considerable worsening of a situation where people, desperate adults, come to this building, to the CAD, and to the front desk, and they will tell you that this happens very frequently with severe mental health problems. I think we have to ask, I don't disagree with Milan about the GP, but I think we need to say, why has this happened? How have we got into such a position? And I think it's not rocket science. Cutbacks, government cutbacks have meant support groups, social workers, specialists, advocates are no more. We don't have the people to deal with it. Many clients have horrendous debts because of the economic situation, and furthermore, huge welfare benefit changes have affected a lot of people. Moreover, the access to adult social care has been raised, and so there are lots of people falling under it. I just wanted very briefly, because we have been going on and on, to tell you a true story about a chap I called James, and then I'd be virtually finished. This old fellow, eighty-six, has multiple health problems, lives alone in Kimberley. He's dated, without income or savings, because he never claimed anything, and is now used to all his savings. He appears to have suffered from dementia, incapable of making rational decisions. On the day of his interview, he appeared with covered in blood, but unaware that it was his own state. He seemed incapable of using public transport, and they found that he had, this is a CAD, advanced kidney disease, high cholesterol, and magnitude. And he returned a week later with electrodebt pension service, saying he is entitled to state pension credit. He said he has no money left. He was very confused, so they took him to the bank. They had great difficulty going over his account, they took him to the North West Bank. And two years after this referral, the vulnerable person turned the phone to say they couldn't help the client. There was nothing that exacerbated his vulnerability. Five days later, Doctor X rang to say the client is in hospital with burns. He left the chit-chat on, set fire to his house. Fire brigade states the conditions he was living in were dangerous. He has afforded stacks of papers, and you can imagine the rest. Now, it was obvious from the start, this client was extremely vulnerable. They called the GP, it took five days to get the referral from the GP, meanwhile, he set the house on fire. The problem really is that the single point of contact at the moment is the GP, and the system is absolutely failing. We are part of it, we are failing. My own concern, I believe that the Knox County Council could find the money, but it's got to be clear what the money is wanted for. The CAD is extremely frustrated. What is needed is this single phone contact number, a health professional, you ring up and you say, please come. If we have the will, it's not rocket science, we can do it.
Thank you, John. I'll shoot you off, but. Thank you. No, I agree with a lot of what you say, but I think with regards to the announcement about the referral to the medical side of it, I think the social care was what was going on, and I agree with you, totally agree with you. Pat, I would just like to point out what's happened with the PCT. Yes, it did take a time to take production when it was passed to the CCGs, but that ten percent went to the county councils and the public health committee, which is what sits now. And therein lies the problem, and therein lies why it is important that we demand that the county council, that they use that money wisely. Because so far, Mr Mayor, they haven't. We had the ridiculous situation of granting a contract for the obesity management of the county to a company, that then realised that it hadn't got its figures right, and pulled out. By this time, Brockstone, who had a fantastic obesity management programme, had moved all its resources to other departments, and so we cannot now provide the obesity management until they find another provider. All the other local providers, our part of Rushford, who didn't have any service whatsoever, Kelsbury, were, you know, they'd been able to do it, because what they were doing was, compared to what Brockstone were doing, was very small. We had the situation with regards to the Jordan alcohol, where GPs didn't know where to go to access methadone for their, sort of, for the people who needed it. They were at their wit's end, and there were people out there who were very dangerous because of this, and vulnerable not only to other members of the public, but themselves. So I am on this public health committee, and I tell you, I have not got much confidence in it. I have not got much confidence. So we really do need to highlight the issues, and from a broader perspective, I think that we're always on here, I think we do want this to improve. And I had the gallstones, I went to the GP, eventually they decided I've had, I've got acid reflux, I've got gallstones, I was referred to the hospital, I had the gallstones out. I had a hernia, I went to the GP, I was referred to the hospital, I had amended. And this is where, Mr Chairman, I'm really uncomfortable about cameras, because I'm actually going to say something now which is acutely personal, I shouldn't be ashamed of it, I'm not ashamed of it, because I've just explained illnesses, and this was an illness. I have suffered in the past from depression, on two occasions, and on both occasions, I went to the GP, I wasn't preferred anywhere, I was given tablets and told to go away and come back in three months and see how you are. And that's the problem, that is the problem, and that will all be over Facebook tomorrow, but I don't care. I think there are a lot of people either in this room, or outside of this room, or you know, that have suffered this problem, and it does need addressing. Where does the funding come from? That's the question. I voted for financial transaction tax motion, but we can't use that for everything. You know, we highlighted it for the government, now highlighting it for putting this right. I think it's got to be that we do have to spend more money on it, I do agree with you, John, that we do have to spend more money on it to get it right, so that in the future, it's not costing us so much money. Because even though the service is inadequate, it costs a fortune, and it's money that very often is wasted. There are that many agencies, and some of them don't know what the others are doing, and the other one doesn't know what the other one's doing. And you're absolutely right, Milan, we need a single point, and that should be the same for every broader industry, not just this one. So I wholeheartedly support the motion, and I will be supportive here.
I'm very keen to speak, yeah. I just want to say, I am anxious to finish the conclusion, so if you want to, please do.
I hope it's going to be a record, Mr Mayor. I do wish to connect with that. It really spoke of us, F, if I remember, I imagine F. I've spoken about how I think we came from with mental health, and I also believe that since the government's no health without a mental health strategy, we have had progress, and we can do lots, lots more. The point is really putting the building blocks in place to make that happen. There have been key strengths, but the government coalition, whatever you want to call it, says they want increased access to mental health services, and to integrate physical says there will be increased access to mental health services, and doing both physical and mental health, because often the two are combined. That there is the early promotion of mental wellbeing, that the early presentation of mental health problems should happen and be solved. And also, overall, there should be improving quality of life for everyone who was affected by mental health, either directly or indirectly. And the outcomes that are expected from this are that more people will have mental health, that more people with mental health problems will recover, that more people with mental health problems will also have better physical health, and more people will have a positive experience of care and support. Fewer people will suffer avoidable harm, really important too, and that also, in the middle street, there's one of the ways in which people with mental health issues will help to overcome, and have been helped to overcome this, is that fewer people with mental health should suffer stigma and discrimination. I think a number of us in here, between the street and other places, in our duties, as councillors and other places, and seeing some of the excellent good work that the council does do. But this is about further implementation in the public and also more in the future. There are examples, like some of the mentions already, about things that have been successful, and that the government wants to do. Patients will have the ability to choose providers of consultants, depending on their pathway. But there will be health pathways. One of the most important areas of this is the gap of eighteen years of age, where people move from children's services into adult services, and the number of times in the past you see examples of young adolescents that have mental health problems, have great background in care, but all of a sudden have no care. So this is all about being strategic, it's all about wrapping services together in partnership, and it's all, all about taking a lead. So I agree with the substantive motion, I would like to add to it, and what I would like to say that at the end of that sentence, the council did give a misadvice on the amendment. The council declares failure of the previous government's to address mental health issues in any sort of plan or strategically, and recognises the progress made by, progress made following publication of the government's No Health Without Mental Health Strategy and subsequent progress. The key to this is further progress, which I think the other parts of this motion indicate, and that the key issue is early recognition of mental health problems, and it shouldn't be G Ps, they're the experts, it shouldn't be social workers, it shouldn't be citizen advice, quite right about this. So it's getting the G Ps to do it right, getting the right treatment, whatever you want to call it, pathways out, whether it be critical care, whether it be secondary care, whether it be primary care, community action, whatever. So we need that to happen. So it is about delivery, it is about the money, which is there through the Health and Wildlife Board, having the culture. So with that, I would like to propose that amendment, and I hope that's what you want to say.
Is there a second for this exchange?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, with the consent of the second of the original motion, I have to accept that, doesn't it?
Does that include the word G P?
I did propose that.
No, 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 but David did. That are spoken to.
I, I, I said I'd agree, if somebody wants to propose that amendment, I would agree.
Really, the amendment, I think, if you force it.
If you're happy with that, then I'll be happy with that. Just, no, I'll, I'll remove that for the, for the, for the, yeah.
So, so the original motion for that is, as stated, with the additional words, I think, with the removal of the word G P. Does anybody else want to speak on this before we come to the vote? Did I have a second, by the way? Oh, you did, yeah, that's right. So if no one else wants to speak, those in favour of this, the original motion, as amended, I agree. Go to Hamilton, please. We're waiting for people to show. I think, I think we can move on to the second, that's correct. Thank you very much indeed. Let's now move on to the third motion, which I'll, I'll, I would really keep for the, the additional two motions to be short.
I, I could remind you about one day, can't I? Right, yeah, I was intending to be very, very pleased with that, given that the motion actually speaks for itself, that it's not right when a hardworking male woman pays her taxes on the edge without any recourse or negotiation, and then see large multinationals either not doing so at all, or negotiating within revenue for reductions. If it's fair to citizens who are earning twenty thousand pounds a year to pay taxes, it's very right for multinationals with profits of twenty million to be doing so as well. And I agree with you, because I understand that there are possibly a couple of amendments to that.
Are there, if you start seconding?
I'm seconding it, and I wish to speak, Mr Mayor.
Yes, I have an amendment, sorry. I have an amendment which has already discussed with the proposer, and he has agreed. Mr Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment, and the decision of the council that we make on this motion is relayed to the Prime Minister.
Thank you very much indeed. Is there a second? Well, no, follow up. Are you a second? Do you accept the amendment? It seems acceptable one, because it has an action to it. So, Greg, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I've got the amendment, while I've also briefly discussed the proposal, I think he supported of it. An ultimate line at the end of the word, companies, delete the remaining motion and replace with, in the U K and the rest of the world.
Is that seconded by someone? Thank you, you have no seconded, is that accepted by the rest of the panel? Okay, so we have a totally amended motion, the amendment has been accepted. Does anyone want to speak on this motion? John versus Ben Graham.
Mr Mayor, again, fellow councillors, a speaking supporter of councillor Steve Carr's motion on tax dodging, this is actually an issue of tax justice, and the clear message is this, that tax should be paid in the country where tax is earned. David Cameron said this year, we need to know who really owns and controls our companies, and he has already announced that the government will make a public register of who owns what. This will uncover who is dodging tax, uncover who is behind corrupt deals, and hold them to account, and ensure developing countries get the money that is rightly theirs. We need to support this register. The motion also says, the U K government must act to end tax dodging by large multinational companies in developing countries. Example of this is Zambia. Zambia is a rich land in poverty. Zambia should be one of Africa's wealthiest countries, it is the world's seventh largest copper producer, but in twenty-ten, it's estimated sixty percent of the population live under the poverty line, and thirty-nine of the population don't have access. How can a country with such rich resources be so poor? There are a number of factors, one of them is tax avoidance, and many of the tax havens come under British political, financial, political control. Parallels, this is my final point, parallels have been drawn with the cuts in benefits, with the loss to revenue through tax charging. How much money does a government lose from, not cuts to benefits, benefit fraud and tax dodging? Estimates say one billion pounds is lost by benefit fraud, and the inland revenue says that thirty-five million is lost through tax dodging. I urge you all to support this motion.
Thank you, Janet, correctly.
Yeah, thank you, the gist of this motion is a sound one, and the reason for that is to kind of highlight the issues that U K has in meeting its tax gap. And the tax gap, of course, is the difference between what governments think they're going to raise through their policies that the H A starts at Parliament, and what they actually end up with, following primarily two strands. And one of those strands is corporate tax avoidance, and feel this strand, of course, we touched on earlier tonight, it's about the proliferation of low-skill, part-time, zero-hours jobs, which are useful in addressing the unemployment bottom line, but not very useful in the lost tax revenue that governments have as a, as a direct result of those policies. Both of those things added together leave you with a tax gap of between, and it depends on which organs you read, of course, but between, I think, between four and twelve billion pounds in the U K alone, and that is why borrowing under this administration is all, and the deficit is increasing. All that said, it's a sound motion. The reason I've made the amendment, of course, is I didn't want the inference to be that there is significant tax avoidance because a country is a developing country. There are, there is, of course, significant tax avoidance in the Western world, and we include countries like Switzerland, Holland, Liechtenstein, America, and Ireland, all of them operate to a greater level of centres, tax havens around and low for multinationals, of which borders have no meaning anymore. So I support the gist of the motion, it is a sound one, and, excuse me, I move the amendment.
Thank you. I'll be in further speed on this motion. In that case, let's, let's move to the vote, those in favour of the motion, please, ready, Alex. That's correct, thank you. Let's move on to, let's move on to the re-motion, and I'm looking for, the council will draft this.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll make my quid as well, because otherwise you won't be making posts in the morning.
The purpose of the motion is to challenge that after planning section, to use the supplementary planning policy for consideration by the council, in order to promote training through development sites that will be coming forward in the borough. The policy will encourage applicants to put forward proposals to the authority as part of their developments to explain how they will increase the number of training courses, apprenticeships, workplaces, and qualifications. The working groups put in place by the leader allow local members to ensure that the economical benefits and developments are directed to the local areas that are taking the burden. And this proposal will add another element to that strategically by ensuring direct benefit to Broxow residents and increasing training opportunities for our residents. All should get behind the council in promoting level jobs and services. I would hope that all members of this authority will be able to support this motion.
Thank you, thank you, John. Is this seconded?
I'll second the motion, Mr Mayor, generally.
Just preempt, preempting, so I don't have to work that never suspense more. In that case, let's get on with the debate then, does anybody want to speak to it? Thank you, Jill.
Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I agree that section one oh six of this should be put towards education, via training courses, apprenticeships, et cetera, and also, of course, schools. The unicef education should always be passed in form. I find that therefore, dual standards by this council, who are all new recently, stock the payment of seven hundred and eighty thousand pounds from developers towards education at Kimberley. Did councillor McRack agree with that?
Thank you for that. Any, any further debate? I think councillor McRack will speak to Jill, probably, that was. Oh, but Jill, please.
Mr Mayor, one shouldn't be surprised by councillor Williams' comments, seeing that candidate, they voted against any development on boots, M seven, and indeed, and indeed on the brewery side, on the grounds that education wasn't realised in the form of the conception of the six. Spoke, spoke against them, yes, of course, I, I will be withdrawn, just for the cameras. What happened was, what happened was, they didn't want to do it, but we, we made an amendment that we would pursue the gap funding through the land, and then their father came on board. Extremely disappointing, as you said to me, because you're always complaining about lack of development in, or choice of development in Green Hill. When it comes down to voting for Bradford side, you find another excuse for not supporting development on a Bradford side. Yeah, you're right. The requirement placed on the local authority, sure, the requirement placed on the local authorities to take a test of viability, which in this case was done by the county's assessors, through the education department, with the county council involved at all stages. That viability assessment has been stipulated by your own government and your own minister that must pass the test. What we try to do therefore is on Bradford side is to beat the gap funding through, through other initiatives, such as the local enterprise partnership or land, and I just say...